Hi.
Hey.
Okay, we are broadcasting, but I'm not recording yet, so.
Got it.
Just letting you know. Did you grab the recorder this morning?
Sorry?
You have the recorder?
I have the recorder, yes.
Perfect, no.
I'm not recording yet.
Yeah, no. Sounds good, cool.
Hi Margaret.
Hi Piper. How are you?
I'm well and good.
Very well, thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Jen.
Hi Paris.
Beau.
Very welcome. I have that open and waiting for those types of requests.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. I searched for Town of Alta and I didn't see it. It doesn't show up in my.
Well, it comes directly from the Zoom platform. I don't actually, it doesn't come from my inbox.
Right, no, I saw that there's a, I searched on Town of Alta and a couple of choices came up as Town of Alta, No Reply, Zoom.
Oh.
But, but I just didn't see one for today, but anyway.
It's weird, can't even seed myself because of a few weird things with the system, but glad you're in.
All right. It is three o'clock. And hi Cliff, hi Sheridan. And Polly, Elise is in the desert. She told me she'd be in her, in a vehicle. All right. Shall we get started then? All right, so I will call the work session to order. It's the virtual work session of Wednesday, February 10th, 2021 of the Alta Town Council. This will be an electronic meeting. And I need to read a determination letter as to our being here together and not having an anchor location together this way and not having an anchor location. Okay, so the mayor of the town of Alta, that's me, hereby determines that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location pursuant to Utah Code Section 52 dash four dash two zero seven four and Resolution 2020 R12. The facts upon which this determination is based include the percentage and number of positive COVID-19 cases in Utah has been significantly higher since May 27, 2020. The seven day average for cases in, on February 2nd is 1394, about half the state's cases in Salt Lake County. As of February 2nd, 2021, there have been 1,685 deaths reported in Utah due to COVID-19. This meeting will not have a physical anchor location. All attendees will connect remotely. Attendees may join the webinar by registering for the meeting through the town website, which is www.townofalta.com. Or the meeting can be watched on YouTube. Additionally, comments may be emailed to the townclerk@townofalta.com. This determination will expire in 30 days on March 3rd, 2021 by me and attested by the town clerk. Okay. So. The item on our agenda for this work session is to talk about the zoning ordinance changes and I am not seeing our erstwhile zonings are. Is John Gouldur, is he, is he joining us?
I'll shoot him the text.
Okay. Well, he did send us a rather helpful memo the other day on February 4th. And there was a list of a few items that we still needed to go, that he thought that we needed to go through. Maybe in the absence of John, Polly, you care to?
Yeah, I actually was pretty involved in drafting that, so I'm familiar. I was just fixing one last thing that Margaret pointed out about the difference on mechanical screening, so. Let me pull that up. And for, just for today's purpose, we should use the clean with latest changes redlined, just so because the page numbering is slightly different.
That's the document that's on our webpage, correct?
Yeah, it should be.
For this meeting, I mean.
Yeah, and then.
It's dated 2/4/21.
Yeah. Let me pull this up, sorry. Do you want to screen share that? Would that be easier?
Happy to, yeah, just, okay, stand by. I'll go ahead and screen share this, let me see. Okay. All right, you're looking at it now, I believe.
Okay, great. So, yep, the last item.
There's, there's page one at the top there. And you know what? If I make this a little bit, I wonder if I can make it a little smaller so that we get more pages. If it gets too small for you to read comfortably, you can go and in up at the top of your screen, usually there's a way to see this, to change the view, I think is what it's called.
So I tried to, we tried to organize this on, you know, items to discuss. suggested changes and no amendments. These were all based on Margaret's very thorough and thoughtful review of the code. So I think, do we want to go right to the meat of it? The exemption for improvements on Forest Service land, so.
That is on page 10, right?
Oh, I see. I kept the numbering the same. That's why it says two, just so that if you were looking at that prior email.
Memo, right.
Memo, that.
But where we are is here.
Yes. So. And maybe.
That's too small. Okay, that's what I want.
It almost seems like page 17, either way, it's, I guess it's the same language, so.
So there's one version here, and then I can go down to 17. And that is 17 here. Okay. And in this section, we're talking about the stream regulations and back on page 10. We're talking about.
Building permits.
Building permits.
So these, of course, go hand in hand.
Okay, and so what we are asking for is that the ski area that structures on the Forest Service property, when they are regulated by partner agencies, that a copy of the permit that's been required by one of those agencies when it gets issued before it to us. And that's what this says.
Correct.
Am I correct? Okay.
Yep, and I think that the.
It's a little different.
Been a little more extensive.
Yeah.
Because seven is just when a building permit is required, but go down to page 17, which is.
I'm here.
A nine.
Right, I'm here.
Oh, I'm seeing 10, 1, 7 on the screen.
Well, I scrolled down. Let me stop sharing and reshare then. I wonder what's going on.
Hello, I'm sorry. I don't know what was going on with my computer either.
Are you seeing page 17 now, Polly?
Just says started share, screen sharing.
All right, interesting. Okay, I haven't had a issue with this. Let me try a slightly different way. Share the whole desktop. How about now?
Nope.
Wonder what's going on here.
I would just give it another minute, Mayor. It seemed like it might have. You might have just.
Well, and I can summarize for everyone.
Well, the difference, right Polly, yeah, that, that makes sense. The difference between the two clauses. This shows that I'm sharing it. I don't know why it's not showing it to you.
I guess that's enough time to have gone by.
You know, the other thing I can do is down, is to get out of it. I'm looking at it on the webpage and that may be part of the issue. Let me see if I can. Do it a somewhat different way.
So while you do that, summarize the latest changes that have been made to this. We have limited it to on Forest Service property, this exemption. And it requires, we've added to the regulatory bodies, the State Engineers Office, Division of Water Rights. And then we have put in language that we want to get proof or we want to be shown the permits, if permits are required by those regulatory bodies. And if, and written notification of the, any work, whether or not another permit is necessary. So it will mean that like Alta Ski Lifts would notify us, for example, if they're putting up you know, a speed limit sign within this area. They don't have to get a permit, they don't have to do anything else, but they would have to notify us. Thank you. Yeah, there you go.
Are you seeing my screen now?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so this is the second, this is page 17 here. So written notification, whether or not an approval from another regulatory body is required must be given to us prior to the structure being installed. Okay, I think it would be really helpful to hear from Polly and from John about the relationship between our jurisdiction and the Forest Service property insofar as this, these requirements would be part of our code.
Do you want to pipe in first, John?
Well, that's a very interesting question because as we've talked about before, the MOU that we have with the Forest Service related to, sorry. Must be being burglarized. The MOU grants land use approval to the forest, but building permit approval to the town. And that per, the building permit approval would go so far as to even include signs, picnic tables on top of poured concrete and anchored to the concrete. I mean, that includes everything, not just because of our new, not really new, but more refined definition of a structure and building code, but it's the same thing in the state mandated building code. So there's two things here. What we might exempt or allow in harmony with the Forest Service, an exemption on setbacks from a, from a waterway and then the building permit. So as Mike Mon has said, you know, we don't really have jurisdiction over what's exempted or not on Forest Service property, but we still have the building permit, so it's a double edged sword for them.
Yeah, and I would pipe it, I mean, we just received some other analysis that indicates that town regulations can apply on Forest Service land. I think here what we're trying to do is help streamline it for Alta Ski Lifts where it's where they're not major structures or where, you know, we're talking about we're talking about all of these things that, but we want to make sure all the other regulatory bodies have approved of it. And we want to know what's going on. We want notifications so that there isn't a situation where we're taken by surprise or that maybe the Forest Service doesn't know about something we want to, you know, we want that notification to help assist our partners to make sure that they can regulate in the way that they deem proper.
Right, that's the key. I mean, we're acting, we're, we're doing this in harmony with the forest. We want notification, which requires the forest, the ski area and everybody else to think about what they're doing beforehand. They tell us and nothing slips by.
Yeah, the MOU actually holds that we will communicate with the Forest Service. And so this would be part of accomplishing that part, that aspect of the MOU.
Right, and vice versa, both ways, two-way communication.
Yeah. Any, any further discussion on this? What in John's memo of February 4th is designated number two, which is the first of the issues for the council to discuss? I guess it's issue number two and issue number three. Margaret, were you just adjusting something or were you looking for recognition?
I, I did unmute, sorry, thank you. Yeah, I, since I've had interruption problems in the past, I didn't want to start talking. The, the question to me is not so much as whether or not it is an exemption per se. I am more interested in an exception on a case-by-case basis because a picnic table or a fire pit or a sign has a very different footprint depending on what they are, how big the fire pit is, where it's placed. We know that human impact can be large and we know that the public utilities and health department, there are things that were allowed in the past that they would not allow now, but their regs have not yet changed. So I think for us to be the on-the-ground local jurisdiction to grant blanket exemptions when we're recognizing how critical and delicate this particular area is suggests that we're not so sure it is so delicate and unique and sensitive. And so I think that I would be absolutely willing to suggest an exception on a case-by-case basis. Clearly, if it is a traffic speed limit sign and it's not placed in a wetlands area or something that would be otherwise a water bed of some kind. It, it ought to move through very quickly. But if it is something that's more involved, I mean, we know that there are signs and posts that require lighting that will acquire other kinds of things so that the impact both during the time of construction and at the time of operation or maintenance can be very different. Is a road going to be necessary to put in there? And so I think granting blanket exemptions is less in our interest as the local authority. And to be a true partner to these other agencies. We're looking at it now. They maybe haven't looked at it in some time. And so we're in a position to strengthen their policies and ideas in a way that supports them and our partnership.
So maybe I missed something, but this goes back to what the mayor said, or like with, with how we, how this interacts with the forest. I mean, if they can just allow a picnic table to go three feet from the creek if they want to, whether we anything or not, we're just kind of, we're just kind of jumping into the process, wanting to be notified and working in tandem with them. How do we amend so that we hit what you're suggesting?
My, my suggestion was instead of exemption language, it would be exception language. And I thought I proposed that before, that the building official would be able to evaluate these things on a case-by-case basis. Clearly, the Forest Service does have ultimate decision authority in, in their national forest and could say, no, we, we want it to go. And that's something we would have to then live with, but if they don't say something ahead of time, we could still impose a a requirement of seeking a permit for these items. That would then go through us. We would notify the forest and forest would have an opportunity to say, yes, we, we think that this structure is fine and we do not object to it and we want it to go forward. And then as the town, we defer to their judgment, but otherwise, just saying, we don't care where it is. We're leaving it to others who have not necessarily weighed in on these things recently. I mean, I don't know that the forest regs say specifically where a picnic table goes or not. I mean, the campground, would it be sited now along the creek bed? I doubt it. But would the forest potentially say yes or no to expansion or to placement of picnic tables? I don't know.
Well, and, and it's not listening, I'm, I'm hearing Mike Mon's voice in the back of my head. It's not that we don't care. It's just that the way it stands with the feds, it doesn't matter if we care. So if we can insert another step where we do get to review, then that, I think, review and comment. It sounds like that's where you're going, but no matter what, I mean, we talked about these things and as silly as it seems, under the state definition of a structure and our, our definition of a structure, we can permit a parking sign if we want. And as Kurt, our building official, said, you know, most places don't permit signs, gates, picnic tables, but they don't have an ordinance. They just don't do it. So I mean, we still theoretically have that control even under the MOU. And that might be. I mean, we'd rather not be permitting, you know, turn left or picnic tables or, you know, that's just not something that I don't, that I think that our building department or we really want to do, but it is a possibility in order to address these things so they don't sneak or slip through. Not sneak through, sorry. So that it doesn't get overlooked somehow. But that's totally different than what we have right in front of us now.
Right, and, and I think that's, that was my point is that I, I believe I had proposed an exception possibility rather than an exemption. So that it would then go to the building official who would be able to say, yep, no problem, end of, end of process. So that that initial determination would take place. And I, I suspect over time that there would be guidelines established that if the, the sign or whatever it is, is a particular size or a particular footprint would be required in a particular area. It would, in effect, gain an exemption, but it wouldn't be an exemption starting out that signs, no matter their size, no matter their placement, no matter their fact are exempt. I, I just think it's too broad a statement.
But at least, well, not at least, but the statement that we're looking at here does require everybody to think. And it does require everybody to, I mean, all the various agencies and submit something to the town. So there's, there's a thought process. It's not automatic.
Well, but, but isn't it true? I thought you said that. I mean, I, I was speaking with Patrick Nelson, who said, we would not allow picnic tables in the places where they currently exist. And I forget what particular area was talking about. And so the fact that there may not be a regulation by some of these organizations, these entities is not necessarily going to get us the is not going to get us past the idea that it's okay with them. It's just they may not yet have language that prohibits it. Does that make sense?
It does, but it's scary because then, you know, then it's up to us. If we don't like it, I'm not sure, we have language either.
It, it seems to me that we're weighing, we're trying to balance a couple of different concerns. And one is that there is environmental protection. And on the other hand, and, and I guess that's one interest. Another interest is doing our due diligence as a town and a government. And then the other interest seems to me to be, I do think it's our place to facilitate the operations of our various businesses that employ our the people who live in our community, many, some of the people who live in our community and the, and the general welfare of our community. And you know, I, I, I think that this list of partner agencies, we've discussed this already, is, is a group of partner agencies that have in their charges, some concern over, for example, water quality and environmental sustainability. So I, I think that we may end up disagreeing on what is the right balance there. I, I think that we may end up disagreeing on what is the right balance there.
Yes. Did you? Yes, I, I agree with that, uh, mayor. It's, it's a matter of balance and um, uh, definitely the concerns that council member Burge expressed are um, sincerely held and um, you know, articulated. Um, I only think that we need to keep in mind that we are in a unique position with respect to US Forest Service lands. Um, you know, um, the, the primacy of the US government to regulate those is in the constitution. And uh, we are talking about um, ski area operations under a special use permit on US Forest Service lands. And then in addition, the exemption that's articulated here is specifically limited to ski area type operations on those Forest Service lands. Um, and um, structures that are not buildings. Um, so um, it's a narrowly written exemption that is directed toward ski area and campground operations. And I think that what we are finding is that nobody's going to be completely happy with this compromise, including me. Um, you know, all, all, all the way around, um, nobody's going to get everything um, that um, that they would like to see out of this compromise or out of this exemption. But I agree with the mayor that it is well-written to balance all of the various interests as well as possible.
Um, uh, what, what I would suggest is if there's um, are there further comment, if there, are there further, further comments on these two issues? These two paragraphs? Um, if not, uh, or, or even if there are, what I would propose is we talk about the, some of these other, the, the, these other changes. It's three twenty-eight now, and I know that we have attendees um, from the Forest Service and the ski area and friends of Alta. And what I would propose is toward the end of the meeting, if we still have ten minutes, we ask ten or fifteen minutes, we ask them to comment. Um, but before we do that, I want to make sure that we have discussed what we need to discuss as a body.
I'd like to weigh in. I, I do support Councilwoman Burke's perspective that an exception as opposed to an exemption would actually allow us to exercise both the spirit and the letter of the MOU, as I clearly understand it, as well as um, assert appropriately and not adversarially, but in a spirit of amicability that we as a town are land use authority and therefore have a unique insight and oversight as to the character of what Alta looks like, what we hope it will be, and what the business's footprint uh, in every aspect of what that meaning could be, should, should be. That, that we're watching that, that we're weighing in on that, that we're working cooperatively, but we're also um, proactively determining how that affects what the community looks like. And I think that's appropriate based on the examples that the MOU sets and also what our unique role is.
Okay. Um, thank you. Elise, it looks like you, you just unmuted yourself.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having to call in because I'm having some data problems, but I can hear you guys of the, via phone call instead of like the, on video for the Zoom. Um, my only comment, you know, is going back a little bit to what Margaret said is that, you know, Salt Lake City Water may not want a picnic table in one spot and the Forest Service may want that. And part of me thinks that those two agencies can work them, work that out on their own. I mean, I think that like the, what Harris was saying is in a way, we are here to help facilitate some of the operations of our businesses, but also we want to be a partner with these agencies and work with them. And I think this paragraph, um, kind, you know, it, it basically says we're going to work with all of our partner agencies and we're going to, you know, get them to talk to each other, hopefully, you know, I think that sometimes there's stories or rumors, or maybe they're true about some agencies not talking to each other and approval happening and um, but this hopefully will get them to communicate a little more with each other. And um, I just want to make sure too that we don't have a, I, I know John Goldner said building department, but we don't have a lot of town staff. So sometimes I just want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we're going to have tons of stuff submitted to somebody that is already having a full-time job. So we do have to be a little careful, I think, on what stuff we do. We, we don't really need a, want to hire somebody for a position like this. So we want to make sure our building official or in this person, in this paragraph, it says the town administration, which I'm assuming will be John Goldner and the building official, but the other person that we have. So I just want to make sure we, we find a compromise and a balance so where we are still remaining involved in this stuff. But we make sure that the agencies that need to weigh in, talk to each other, um, and make sure that they work together.
Yeah, that's a great point, Elise. You know, so theoretically, the forest and the public utilities could argue about whether or not they want a picnic table two feet away from the creek. And when they get finished, they tell us. So I mean, people, it's part of the process, which it wasn't before. You know, so we're, we're ahead of where we are now. We're ahead of where we've been. But you know, that's relying on, that's relying on the other agencies to talk. And then they submit their approvals to us. And it goes ahead. It doesn't just go ahead. I mean, we now know, um, it, nothing goes ahead without people specifically looking at it. And then weighing in with the town. It's like, yeah, we've looked at this and it's okay.
In my experience, this Forest Service and Salt Lake City Public Utilities um, and Salt Lake County Health Department are well acquainted with each other and um, do have regular communication. So I mean, we may, we, there may be times where we actually have heard that there are differences of opinion between those agencies that they don't know about. And if we find that out, we can call it to their attention. But uh, in any case, I I think Elise's point is well taken and we don't need to increase the burden on John, I think, and um, let alone uh, the costs of uh, of, of involved in hiring somebody to manage some of this. John, are there other, what, what else should we take a look at um, in this document and in, or John and Polly? Uh, let's say we've got about ten more minutes before we try to get some input from the people who are attending the meeting. Um, we, how else should we spend our time, would you suggest?
Well, before, uh, because Polly read, did the memo. Um, and again, we went from like seventy-five issues to forty-one issues to eleven. And I think we've really got six now to go. Uh, and I don't want to discount any of those, but it's like, you know, we can work those out. Um, the big thing is uh, this paragraph with the proposed exemptions and whatever happens there gets uh, added to or not the building permit required section in ten one seven. So I mean, if we get through here, we can get through anything else. Everything else uh, is language, like the purpose statements. Um, I mean, you've had these. I, I was just totally focusing on this main paragraph. If we get this, I think we're done. So Polly, help me with.
If, if I could just, if I could just interject, the, the question about the permit, if we are exempting from permit in ten one seven, these things, um, then would we even get the notification?
We're requiring the notification in ten six eight nine. So we should, we're requiring it.
Right. We'd still get the notification. We just wouldn't.
Require.
At which now sometimes we get neither or we do neither.
Could you say that again? I'm not sure I caught that. Please.
So on something that might be proposed to be exempted, um, the forest and the public utilities and the health department and the state's w- waterway, whoever that is, um, they hammer out whatever they want to hammer out. Then they or the ski area tells us, okay, we're going to give this exemption. So we would get notified as a town. After the whatever exemption is um, proposed, is discussed and approved or settled on, uh, but we would not, we would not issue a building permit for that.
The, the exemption in this clause is from the setback requirements, not from a notification requirement.
Right.
Yeah, and uh, um, the curious, uh, Polly McLean's opinion on this, but um, as I've understood and read the language that we've drafted, the exemptions are actually conditioned on the notification being made.
Yet the last sentence requires written notifications prior to the structure being put in place. So um, that applies whether or not a building permit is required.
And, and maybe we could be more specific and, and flat out say if it's, if something is exempted and we're notified, we don't issue a permit on that.
Well, what it says, the way this is written, Cliff, is it says they are exempt from these setbacks so long as and only if the structures comply with the requirements of the regulatory bodies having jurisdiction, including that list. Uh, and the submission of that uh, permission being submitted to the building official.
Yeah.
Yep. So, so that's a condition of the exemption as I read it. Um, I wonder, uh, if you all could bear with me for a moment. I'm not sure if this is the, the time to bring it forward, but I, I do want to just knock the side of it. A couple, uh, and I think it's germane to the exemption issue. Um, a couple of concerns that were brought forward. Uh, one by Mike Mon, um, Alta Ski Area and one by um, Pat Shea, um, friends of Alta. And um, again, uh, it would be awesome to get Paul in the plains, uh, perspective on this. Um, question from uh, Mike Mon in an email that we wrote yesterday about um, variances, the possibility of seeking variances um, for uh, ski area related structures on private land. Um, my question, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, really just to ask the question. I'm not sure when it can be answered, but are um, are current um, variance provisions that are within the um, building and zoning ordinances that we currently have sufficient to address uh, the ability of Alta Ski Area to seek uh, variance for um, lift-related structures on, on private land according to the standards that might be applied.
Let me go first and I'll set Polly up to, to correct.
Wait, one second. I just want to add, if, if I can jump in here just for a second. Um, and Cliff, I think that one of their main concerns is running snowmaking lines to cover the supreme skiing area, the, the lift area or the areas served by the supreme lift. Because they own some private lots in there that the, that the snowmaking would either be applied to or pass through.
Yep. Good. So that's my first question. Now I mean, I'm going to mute myself, but then I want to come back to my second question, um, to um, see if we can address a concern that was um, brought forward by Pat Shea.
Okay. I, I don't think there's any way we can give variances on non-conforming, non-con, non-conforming parcels. Period. I mean, if you can't build anything on it, you can't get a variance to, to put a line or a lift top or something else on, on private property. Unless we changed it for everybody up there. I mean, there's nothing up in the basin. Um, it within those, within the Secret Lake area or the other two subdivisions that are complying parcels. And if we crack that open, it's open. So I don't, we, I don't think we can apply this variant standards or exceptions uh, to private land without opening up every other vacant parcel in the basin. So now Polly, tell me what I missed.
Well, I, I agree with you, John, but I also think that you could, so I don't think, to answer um, Cliff's comment, I don't think that using the variance section under the Alta code, which is ten five eleven would really apply because that's a very um, well, variances under the state code are very specific and I don't think they would need it. But we could put in an exception that would apply to everyone on that private land. But if, you know, A, B, C, D, and E are met, then you're accepted from the setback. And it's just a blanket exception. Um, and maybe the, you know, you have the building official make that determination. So I don't think it's completely out of the question to do that. Um, but you would want to do it within that portion of the code as opposed to another process within the, that already exists in the code.
So would it be possible, Polly, to uh, have a, a statement that says um, that certain applications, certain, certain kinds of structures and maybe make a list of them? So that's one question. So that's one aspect is what structures are we talking about? And then the second aspect is, um, let's say we said something like no significant impact on water quality. Um, that's a second point. And then the third point would be, could we say something like if these were subject to review by our partner agencies, they would be uh, approved? Or is that too hypothetical?
Well, they couldn't. I mean, all the partner agencies would apply except for Forest Service, right?
Right. Oh, I see. Right. That's a good point. Okay. So could we say that if the partner agencies judge this to have a uh, um, n- no significant impact to water quality, that would be okay? Now, of course, part of this whole impetus, and this is, this is where I think I, I'm sharing a sentiment with Margaret is that the whole reason to put an overlay zone in the way we're doing this is in case the policies of our partner agencies were to change. And on public ground, I have less you know, concern about that. I can imagine those changing under uh, some different administration say, but that seems like a, like a pretty solid bulwark. But I can imagine that in some future legislative session, the ability to regulate private ground in certain respects is taken away from municipalities.
It's approached every single legislative session.
So I'm, I'm a little wary of that, but uh, I mean, I, I have a lot of confidence in Salt, for example, in Salt Lake City Public Utilities today. I don't know what would happen in the future. So if we were to say no, if we didn't say that as judged by the other agencies or anything, but are we in the position practically to make a judgment about no significant impact to watershed quality, say, as a town? Is that, is that within our capability?
That to John to just answer?
Well, and I, and I don't want to, I, I don't want to be a barrier to anything this gear is trying to do, but I also don't want sixty-two more houses in the Albion Basin. So whatever we do, you know that everybody is going to be looking at some way. And, and I said this the other day, I think. There's a guy across, around the corner from me who built a snowmaking system in his front yard for his kids so they could have a white Christmas. who built a snowmaking system in his front yard for his kids so they could have a white Christmas. So if, if, if I see somebody getting of an exception for snowmaking lines, I'm going to build a 20 by 30 foot building and put a snowmaking system in there and say, hey, this is, I should get the same exception. This is just a snowmaking line, even though I'm a private citizen on private ground. So yeah, Polly, you're right. We could do this, but we just have to be incredibly careful.
Well, maybe one of the questions for the ski area is why is it so difficult to comply on their private parcels? And, and accomplish what they want to accomplish.
And the ski area wouldn't want 60 more houses up in that area either. And it's not 60 because Salt Lake City owns 15 or so and but whatever we do could radically change everything up there.
I think you make a good point. And I, and I, and I'm sympathetic to what Polly said some time ago about having to treat private landowners similarly or the same even.
So I was just going to just add quickly, and I talked to Harris about this. And I don't know if Polly got a chance, if Harris, you got a chance to talk to Polly about it. And this may address John's question about these 60 more houses. But on the top of page 16, it's part of the wastewater system in the Upper Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone. We have a word where we added public sewer system that they must be connected to a public sewer system. And we don't have public sewer that goes up past our restaurant. So by putting this in here, we are pretty much saying that you can't really have any new homes or buildings unless you can connect to a public sewer system. So one of the things I brought up to Harris's attention is I just wanted to make sure by putting the sentence in here, we aren't doing a taking of anybody's land because I don't really want any more lawsuits about that. But if we do want it in there, that's fine. But I just wanted to bring it to attention. I just want to make sure we're not taking anyone's land by putting this public in here. And then also this seems like a pretty strict thing about not any, you know, no other buildings being able to be built up there if you're going to have this sentence in here.
Yeah, I did bring that up with Polly. Polly, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I, I don't view this as a taking and I think it's within our police powers to make sure that as many people as possible is, is, are on the public sewer system. Obviously all the ones that exist now are grandfathered in, and so that's not a problem. And just to be clear, it's not for every structure that that applies to. It's only for occupied structures. So meaning habitable structures. So if you were to build a, I don't know, a shed or
A snowmaking facility.
Right. That wouldn't be occupied. I, I don't know how we would define that.
Yeah. So what I, what, so what I was saying is that if we were to make some sort of exception for private landowners to go through a process, you know, by having this sentence and some, you know, you're trying to take this whole document as a whole, you can't have any other homes up there. So even if someone was to try to go through an exception process, if they can't connect to a public sewer system, they can't build a new home. So in some ways this exception or exemption paragraph that we're talking about for private landowners in my mind doesn't apply to occupied buildings. We're talking about things that could be done to their land and or I, like I was telling Harris the other day that I'm still a little nervous about this Upper Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone and how it's going to impact our existing cabin owners. We basically are making two cabins non-compliant when they weren't before. And so part of me still wishes we had a way that they could go through a process, kind of like what Margaret drafted at the last meeting. Something similar so that they could ask for something and but you know, a building, obviously if you're not connecting to public sewer, you can't make a new one, but I, I just think that some ways if we could make the cabin owners and other property owners, private property owners be able to do a little bit more, or at least try to ask for something or have a process where they can try to ask for that. I would support that.
Well, and, and we've done that. And even the two cabins that I can't remember if it's two or three that would become non-conforming because they're within 100 foot setback of a waterway. I mean, we recognize the 21 cabins in the basin. We want them to stay. We echo the same thing that we say in the general plan. And now for the first time, and we don't get to pick. I mean, we're recommending that they be allowed to tear down and rebuild. It still has to be approved by public utilities in the health department. We're recommending that we'll allow them to tear down and rebuild and add 250 gross square feet. I mean, and this is for cabins or houses in an area that they can't do anything. Right now they can't do anything. They can maintain and they can rebuild if they're destroyed by a natural act. So I know that Del Draper is upset about this, but I mean, we're doing more. We're being more lax with our proposal under this Upper Albion Basin Protection Overlay Zone than what they've had for the last 50 years.
Okay. So we have nine more minutes in the work session. Shall I? What, what do you think about inviting those comments from those three entities? That is people who are, are associated with entities that we care about.
Awesome, there. Let me just take less than a minute to identify an issue that we're not going to resolve today. But that Pat Shea from Friends of Alta raised in the draft memo that was circulated. Just a question to not lose track of is and I didn't see the case law or statute cited. And so it, I, I don't think it's conclusive at this point. But we might, we might find out through dialogue whether it's conclusive or not. But the question is whether the town does need to state in the enacting ordinance that the ordinances are subject to the property clause of the U.S. Constitution and that they're intended to, to go right up to that line, but not cross it. So with that, I just want to identify that issue.
Okay. Do you, are you looking for a comment from Polly on that? Or just did you want to make sure that? Okay.
Eventually, yeah. Or it could be today or eventually.
Yeah, I haven't had time. I only got Pat Shea's that memo today, this, this late morning and haven't, I was able to look at it, but not look up any of the case law or anything like that. But you know, it's a, if we want to put that, I, you know, I think that whether or not you state it, the federal constitution is always going to usurp local laws, et cetera. So I don't know that there's legal, legally it's fine to put it in legally. I think it's also fine to keep it out.
Okay. Good. Let me, there's a, there's in the Q and A, Pat Shea says, if you go the exemption route as opposed to an exception, you have greater authority to stop the proposed action if the project goes ahead with it, with notice or without. So that's a comment that he made. But it looks like Ben Crya is with us at the moment. Ben, have you got a, you know, we don't have very much time, but if you have a comment, a minute or two, that would be welcome.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me? I apologize. I'm in the field right now.
We hear you.
Cool. Yeah. A couple of things, you know, I would like to reiterate the fact that the Forest Service does work very closely with Salt Lake City Department of Public Utilities. Cause there's a dual mandate in the enabling legislation for public utilities and the watersheds. So we are always taking, you know, their higher mitigation ratios for projects. We use their one to three standard compared to our one to one. So they're definitely, you know, we consult with every project that's, that's occurring. Another thing is, you know, you guys are obviously more than welcome to put a, a town ordinance in. I just don't know, and specifically in regards to, I think it was 1068-9. You know, what, what teeth the Forest Service would have to hold Alta Ski Lips accountable if, you know, say they didn't submit you know, their approval request for avalanche control device or what have you. Because the town ordinance, you know, doesn't necess, it, it's a weird situation. We're running it by our Office of General Counsel to see how that town ordinance would apply. But you know, from our position, you know, things on national forest system land, we're, we're, we're ultimately making the decision. You know, we definitely want to notify you guys and be good partners. I just, like I said, I don't know what teeth we would have to hold their feet to the fire, if any. So that's why we're running it through the Office of General Counsel. And then as far, sorry, as far as the MOU goes as well, I don't know if anyone at the Forest Service necessarily views, you know, structures as picnic tables and signs and fire pits. You know, we, we obviously comply and recognize the need for building permits for sure. But you know, if we were managing the Albion Basin campground, we wouldn't necessarily reach out to the town if we were to put a new fireplace in. And you know, now that we have the agreement with Alta, you know, it's kind of the same scenario, but definitely we're open and willing to have more discussion on the topic.
Thanks, Ben. Polly, did you, do you have anything to add to that? Or should we see if Pat or Mike wants to?
I think you can go on. That's very helpful and I think is in line.
Okay. All right. Pat, since Mike is, Mike is on our agenda in our town council meeting, if we, if we run out of time in this one, I'm sure he'll let us know what he thinks there.
Yeah. Three quick points on the exception versus the exemption. I'd use the metaphor, does the town of Alta want to have the train get out of the station before it can do anything? Or under the exemption, do you want the train stopped until that exemption is approved? I think that's a very important policy question for the town. Second, John's concern about future legislators or legislation somehow taking away the right to do any kind of zoning or planning in the town of Alta's jurisdiction. I think is severely restricted by the Utah Constitution because it establishes for towns, cities and counties a almost non-preemptive right in my judgment for public health and safety. And that's generally the rubric that they use for zoning and planning. On Cliff's question, I'm not, not so sure that one can have a explicit determination of what the U.S. Constitution or the Utah Constitution will say. I've spent much of my life establishing new legal precedent, mostly in the area of the First Amendment or Article One, Section One is kind of part in the Utah Constitution. So unfortunately, a lot of these things can change. My biggest worry, as it has been for 41 years now, is that the county commission or now county council or the state legislator or the governor comes up with some plan that simply wipes away much of what we've been trying to do in terms of conservation, preservation and recreation. And then finally, I had a conversation with the United Fire Authority, UFA, the other day there. Truck was going down the canyon and I waved and they were kind enough to stop. And I asked them if they would, and I mentioned this to Harris, that if they would give a briefing on wildland fires. When I was with BLM, I was in charge of federal wildfire resources. And my big concern about fire pits in Albion Basin, particularly in this time of drought and climate change, is that we could have a fire that would literally burn all of Albion Basin. And I think if somebody's going to put up picnic tables, they have to be away from the streams and not have fire pits. Because that's just inherently dangerous. 80% of the wildland fires are started by human beings, mostly negligent, leaving a fire burning. That's it.
Thanks, Pat. Indeed, the fire at White Pine this summer was, I think, exactly that source. All right. It's 401. Mike, I'm going to ask you to your item number three on our agenda for our regular meeting. So how about if we carry this conversation to that moment? Thank you. Okay. All right. So with no, any objections to moving into the town council meeting? Okay. So I'll call the, the meeting to order and I'll refer to the declaration of an electronic meeting without an anchor location that I read at the beginning of the work session. The first item on this, well, that was the first item, I guess. The second item on our agenda is citizen input. Piper or and or Jen, you can let us know what we need to do there. Please. Piper, you are muted. Yep, there you go.
Yes, I'd like to read a couple of letters that came in after the comment deadline time. The one that did come in before the deadline has been posted and the council people have received. Trying to find my folder. Sorry. I had it pulled up. The first one is from Rondir Jam in the Proven Estates area. And it is an email. And it says, having owned and operated the Creekside Chalets since 1996, I find the idea that requiring three parking spots per home in our neighborhood to be excessive, unreasonable, and against what we're all striving for at Alta. We try to encourage any renters or guests we have at our homes to take transportation service up the canyon to alleviate congestion and reduce the carbon footprint and associated pollution associated with having an unnecessary vehicle or two crowding the canyon road or sitting idling in a parking lot. Requiring three parking spots per home would also be probably impossible, given the tight constraints that we all have to abide by during the winter due to the amount of snowfall and the necessity of clearing the snow from the parking area. I believe that two parking spots per residence is more than adequate for the needs of the neighborhood and beneficial to the environment and also in keeping with the spirit of what Alta represents. Thank you for your attention to this matter. From Rondir Jam. These other two letters are also regarding the Proven Estates. The next one is from Dick Manley, Richard Manley. Karen Travis informed me today that Alta Council is considering requiring three parking spots for each of the rental units for 2122. Two parking spots per rental has always been adequate for many years. Three parking spots per rental would be a huge challenge, if not impossible. We've all made the two parking spots work. I don't see how increasing the parking allotment from two to three is even possible. My vote would be to retain the two car status. Thank you. And the last one is from the Paisley Ferguson cabin owners. And it's not opening. Oh, here it comes. Dear Mayor, Sondak and Council, we are writing in response to a letter from Jen Clancy written January 28th, 2021 regarding a business license application. The information provided states that we need a minimum of three designated parking spots to obtain a business license. We own a single family home in Proven Estates and have rented it through Alta Chalets for 15 years. During this period, Alta Chalets has communicated with all renters that the rental comes with up to two parking spots. There has never been an expectation that anyone renting our home could bring and park three vehicles. We would like to request that the town of Alta change We would like to request that the town of Alta changes the requirement for licensure from three cars to two cars. The congestion in the canyon has increased dramatically since we have owned our home. The messaging we have heard from Alta is for visitors to carpool and take public transportation when available in order to minimize cars in the canyon. We do not think it is necessary or beneficial to the safety and enjoyment of the canyon to offer three vehicles with each rental in Peruvian Estates. Historically, we have never offered three parking spots to the renters of our home. Thank you for considering this request. Please contact each of us to discuss this further if you need more input. Best regards, Tricia Petzold and Ted Paisley and Kate and Hugh Ferguson.
Thanks, Piper. Can I can I, I don't know that I received a copy of the letter that precipitated this.
I will send it to you.
Okay. And and maybe, I don't know if the other town council members are
I'll send it to everyone.
Taken by a little a little by surprise of with this issue, or if I just happened to miss it, but that would be helpful. Thank you.
I'll send it to everyone. So we have, I have a short list of folks that want to make public comments that are connected here on Zoom. My order is going to be Karen Travis, Sheridan Davis, Dan Ketner, and then Pat Shea. So I will give you guys each the opportunity to talk. If you can, I guess, limit your comments to two minutes is my understanding. That would be great. So Karen, you're up first here.
Karen?
I'm unmuted.
Nope, yep, I can hear you.
Okay. Well, it's good to see everybody, and I will be really, really happy when we do not need to do this by Zoom anymore. Anyway, as you know, I am an original homeowner in Peruvian Estates, the only original homeowner up there. And a quick little bit of history. When we and our neighbors started applying for building permits, the town of Alta suddenly told us that we had to indicate where we park two vehicles per property. This was not part of any zoning or building code. This was a last-minute decision by somebody in the town office and not part of any ordinance or code. So at that time, all of us neighbors met, put together a parking plan and submitted it to the town of Alta. Our plan was deemed compliant, and most of us got home building permits around the same time. We, my neighbors and I and my husband have continued to abide by this plan for over forty years. We have also ensured that our cabs be limited to at least one, but not more than two vehicles when they have rented our homes. Ultimately, we try to get our cabs to come to Alta via one of the transportation companies and not bring a car at all. But as you probably all know, it's a very hard sale in that Americans especially feel that they have to have a car while on vacation. A couple of weeks ago, all of us in Peruvian Estates only received a notice from the town about that there is a heretofore unknown and unenforced business requirement on the books that says we only in Peruvian Estates must indicate on our annual business license application that we have three parking spaces per property. With everyone in the town, now we're coming toward limiting the number of vehicles in the canyon. It is very counterproductive to suddenly tell us in Peruvian Estates that we must increase our number of parking spots from two to three. This new requirement is problematic for everyone. And unless the town of Alta is trying to shut down our businesses and lose substantial tax revenues, it seems to me that this is an easy fix. Either change the requirement from three parking spaces to two per property, as we have been doing for over forty years, or remove this business license requirement entirely. I hope that you as the town council as our representatives will work to solve this unneeded dilemma so that we can all continue to be compliant as we always have been.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Sheridan, you already have permission and you're up next.
Thank you. I've been thinking a lot about the nature of love and its relationship to public service and how my love for Alta can be best expressed in my role as an elected official of the town. My thinking's been informed by Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley's phrase, "Policy is my love language," and Professor Cornell West's assertion, "Never forget that justice is what love looks like in public." I believe, Mayor Sondak, that you sought information and research from the Harvard School of Public Health and MIT out of these impulses to protect our community the best way you know how by providing science-based information about what scenarios pose the greatest risk for our community members and how we might best mitigate these risks. Both privately and publicly, I've applauded your efforts and strongly supported your findings. You have my great admiration for seeking guidance and disseminating information to protect citizens in our town at no small expenditure of political capital. Therefore, I must ask you, in working with Chris Colley as our emergency manager, but without the assistance of the full contingent of the council of our town, why you did not secure vaccines for the most vulnerable amongst us? Knowing what you know, that indoor public-facing employees are at the highest risk for communicating or contracting COVID-nineteen, why was this constituency not advocated for? Our elders, our teacher, our indoor service workers, particularly those in restaurant settings, these groups who you know have the highest risk as opposed to people working outdoors or indoors who are not public-facing, were not your highest priority in seeking vaccine dissemination in Alta, which you and many people on this call have benefited from and which I applaud. Though the community members that have received this arguably are not in categories of the people at highest risk. Why did you act in this way? Knowing what you know, sir. Because I want to hold you to the same standard that I hold myself to, I want to close with this quote. "It's impossible to lead the people if you don't love the people. You cannot save the people if you don't serve the people." And here I'm quoting Cornell West. I look forward to hearing your full explanation, sir. Thank you.
You are grossly misinformed, Councilmember Davis, and I take offense to what you've just said. The fourth bullet point to my mayor's report reads, "I've been working to have any eligible member of our community be invited to be vaccinated. I have asked repeatedly if those in congregate living quarters and our frontline hospitality workers can receive vaccinations." You are misinformed. I have been doing what you have now accused me of not doing. It is not in my power to secure vaccinations. And I know that you've been told that. In my view, any person who is vaccinated is an asset relative to not getting vaccinated in our community. And I have pushed as hard as I can to have every member of our community be eligible. I've only been given an affirmative answer for some. I see no reason why those some ought not to have been vaccinated because I could not secure vaccinations for all. Okay. Jen, is there, who's that whoever is next? Jen, you're muted.
Thank you. Dan Ketner, I just prompted you to unmute yourself. He's on a direct dial phone, so it might be a bit more difficult for him to figure that out. Dan, are you with us? Elise, do you by chance know what the procedure is for direct dialing in to mute and unmute yourself?
You have to hit star six to unmute yourself and then star six to mute yourself again.
Okay, Dan, can you try that?
There you go.
I'm here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I was just listening in in regards to what Karen was talking about, about the parking in Peruvian Estates. And I I echo her response. I mean, we we seem to have a good thing going down there, the the way it's working right now and to to make it to make us have three parking spots per house. It just, I think there were a lot of reasons given, and I agree with all of those. So that's that's all I wanted. So I'm not a homeowner there, but I do, I have spent a lot of time and energy managing the parking down there, and it's seems to be working fine the way it is.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And next we have Pat Shea. I'm going to give you permission here. Pat?
Yeah, I'm here. Can I just pass my comments until after Mike Mon speaks?
Well, comment is now.
Okay, well, then I'll do. I'll just wait until I send the letter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that is all we have. Mayor Sondak.
Is the mayor and council, do you want me to just touch on what this Peruvian Estates issue is, just to put it in context? And then if you want to put it on a future council meeting, by all means, you can.
Yeah, I think, thanks, Polly. I think that would be helpful. And just to make it everybody clear about the timeframe for this, that this is talking about an October renewal. Is that correct, Jen?
Next of next year, yes, we were trying to
Of twenty twenty-one, October twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, so it would be business license for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two business license cycle.
Okay.
No, it's on the books now. We were trying to notify residents in that area of the ordinance and trying to provide them with a mechanism to meet the ordinance requirement. That was what the, that's a summary of what that letter was about. And you should all have that in your inboxes now.
And isn't it accurate, Jen, that that ordinance has been in the books since at least two thousand twelve?
I believe so.
But unenforced?
Correct. That's my, that's my understanding. And so I had recognized that about a year ago, and it unfortunately just took me a bit to get this letter out and work through the process of trying to figure out next steps here.
Yeah, and I've been working with Jen as well to to get this out and as was pointed out in one of the letters, there's, you know, council can reexamine this language, but right now, because the those, that statute is on the books, the town is going to you know, moving forward, enforce that at the next licensing cycle.
Hey, are you listening? You didn't, you didn't hear Sheridan just now.
Karen, you should mute your microphone, please. Thank you. Okay. I misplaced my agenda. Oh, there it is. Okay. No more citizen input, correct, Jen?
That is correct.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Mike Mon, who we put off until now from the work session. So Mike, if you could, Jen, you've got to let him in.
I'm moving him over right now. He'll be with you in just a second.
Thank you. All right. There we go. Can you hear me? Yes, we can. Hi, Mike. Hello there. Thank you. First, I'd just like to express my appreciation to the town and all the things that we've worked through in this COVID season. And I I applaud Harris for the hard work that he has done to working with the ski lift company. We haven't always seen eye to eye on how to do things, but I think we've all been trying to achieve this. And I am tickled, pink, that we are actually gotten this, we're halfway through the season. And we have not had a major outbreak in the town of Alta. And people are coming and they're skiing and they're recreating. And so we are pleased and we just hope the next half of the season works out the way the first the first half has. Just a little update. You know, we're, as far as on our revenue side of things, it's that, you know, some, some of our operations are feeling the impact of COVID quite significantly. Our food and beverage operations are down over fifty percent on the revenue side year-to-date. Ski school's down forty percent year-to-date. We are on lift tickets. We're flat. And our ski shop is flat. When it comes to visitors, we're down in kind of the destination visitor that comes and buys a lift ticket. We're down nine percent year-to-date out of that group. But when we look at our season pass holders, which is the locals, which we have seen, them all try to come, we're up eight percent year-to-date. So that's just kind of a little recap of kind of how things are going. You know, we had a very challenging day last Friday. Want to express my thanks to the the town Marshals, Donut Department, everything that they've done. Mike Moore and his team have been awesome. I mean, they were just champs out there helping to try to get people out of here when we had that storm last Friday. And I I just can't say enough thanks, express enough thanks for the hard work that they've done and a great working relationship we've had. We've had eight days this season where we've had more demand than we've had capacity. And we, you know, we've turned away a lot of people on those days, pass holders, other people who want to come. We've got beat up a little bit over that, but that's a a reality, I think, that we have to deal with as a ski area in the future. I think we're just getting to that point in time where there's going to continually be more demand than capacity. And so we're we're looking at how do we how do we go forward? And it's really parking capacity is what it is. It's not mountain capacity. We've had plenty of mountain capacity. You know, we've been, we've had capacity for probably a thousand, fifteen hundred more people on the mountain, but not, not in our parking and not, not in COVID. We wouldn't want that, those additional people here in our COVID scenario that's there. But we are, unfortunately, it looks like we have the what's this, the third or the fourth Friday storm in a row that's lining up for this Friday. And we're trying to prepare ourselves for that and try to do better than we did last Friday. And one of the, you know, we tried to we tried to take some steps to close the ski area early and get people out of here early and it didn't really work. It kind of bit us all in went the wrong way. We've recognized that it's just the sheer numbers. When you look at the number of cars we have in the canyon to try to move them out prior shoot is really tough. We can get a few to, we don't, we only want a few to move because, you know, we, we actually just, we went to gridlock at two o'clock really last Friday and no one moved till Because, you know, we, we actually just, we went to gridlock at two o'clock, really last Friday, and no one moved till 10:00, 6:00. For those people in their cars for that whole period of time. And then it was another two hours till we got everybody out of here. So I think we have a pretty good plan going into this weekend, but it's, is a challenge. The, one of the things that stood out to us this weekend, which I would ask the town to see if you can work with the county and UDOT on this issue is, it is very evident that when we try to get all of these people out of here, Alta comes to a standstill in gridlock because of all of those people trying to exit Snowbird. You know, the bypass, when all those people on the bypass road, every one of them tries to get in the line of traffic, it's like 40, 50 to one. And then you have everything on, on the ramp and everything coming out of the cliff. And then you have entry two and entry one. That's why we come to a standstill. And I'm, I'm not, no, I don't know what the law is, but you know, this is a state highway and it would seem that somehow there should be some equity for the people trying to exit the town of Alta versus Snowbird. And I don't know if there's something there we can look into from a legal standpoint and, and try to push forward. I don't know that I can push that very well as a private business, but I think the town may have more leverage to do.
Mike, do you know, is that Forest Service ground, that parking on the bypass road down there?
I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if that is or not. But I would just give you like a little challenge to kind of look into that and see what we can do. And, you know, I'd love to see an Alta lane through Snowbird. And it obviously gets very complicated when we have the bypass road, you know, the main line closed. It just, it like doubles the problem like very quickly. So anyway, just, I would give you that to think about. The other thing that is happening is UTA. So UTA, the ski areas over the years have agreed to help subsidize UTA service in the canyons by helping, you know, paying for season pass holders and employees and such to ride the bus free of charge. UTA is looking at changing that arrangement. They're trying to look at it being a service that's being contracted directly with the, this resorts. You know, we have, in support of the broader Alta community, we've always, you know, purchased paths, passes and worked for all the other businesses in the town to be able to buy their passes to the ski lift company going forward. I think it's, I think the town has, I don't know what really legal right you have to have some level of bus service, but that probably should be injected into this process right now that's starting to, because the, the contracts are being looked at differently. We're looking at probably removing our subsidy from season pass holders because those riding the buses were given all of the money to UTA. You know, that they ride the bus enough that there's no, we actually are paying UTA for people to ride the bus and some, some courses. So we're looking at continuing to subsidize our employees. We want our employees to ride, but we may, we've got to find some other middle ground that can help us to support public transportation in a way that makes some sense. And we're going to need the involvement probably of the town or the other businesses in this process as we go into the negotiations. We have a meeting coming up here, and I think it's a week from Friday with UTA, where they're going to start talking about the changes in how the deal works. And I would encourage the town to, to be involved in that because it's really a town issue. When we look at all the businesses that are using UTA, it's not just a ski area issue. So if you could, and I'm more than willing to let, share when that information is and let you know. In regards to zoning and private land stuff that you were talking about in the last, in the work session, we're more than willing to share with you annually, we provide a, for example, a summer operations and maintenance plan that we submit to the Forest Service. And it will list, you know, that we're going to replace these signs or fix this, these things and do maintenance and these type of things that would involve some of those structures. And we're more than willing to, to share that with you and let you know what that is and what's up going. You know, we had hoped through this ordinance process that we could figure out how, as we need to move forward, we intend, we'd like to move forward with moving snowmaking into the supreme area. As was evident, we really needed it this year. And we ended up shutting down Supreme after we had opened for a period of time because we didn't have adequate snow to, to keep it open for the public. And, and so part of that is we have some of the runs that would be covered with manmade snow and which where we would run the snowmaking line and potentially have us not need to have a snowmaking tower are across some of our private lots. And so we would, we would be open to a, an exemption or a variance process where we could come in and, and, and be able to be compliant and help the town about to understand what we're trying to accomplish. And I've always asserted that we would like to be held to the same standards on our private land that were held on the public land, you know, with the Forest Service far as environmental protection and watershed and, and stormwater and, and the BMPs and all those type of things. We're more than willing to apply those. We were just hoping there's a way that, you know, we're trying to plan and go forward. We'd like to have a path forward to be able to do that. So it encourages you just as, as you look at those changes to figure out if there's a way that we can kind of have a path to, to work forward in that, in that direction. And then in regards to, you know, we're, we're still hoping to, we're trying to move forward with our letter to, or our project with the Forest Service, a dealing with the parking issue. You know, we kind of are down to kind of two, two courses of action to try to deal with that. And the one is, the one that we feel is the most appropriate and the least disruptive would be to, you know, add those additional parking spots in those areas we've designated so that we can continue to support the broader Alta community and to some degree, the backcountry community here in the town of Alta as we've had in the past. Or the other is to become more restrictive. And we would just encourage the town, if you could move forward with where, whatever your position's going to be, we're, we'd like to kind of move forward as somebody in our information and the Forest Service is asked to know where you're at. So that would be useful to know. You know, we did a, a little survey the other day and figured out of the 36 cars parked in the Grizzly parking lot overnight, eight of them are Alta skier employees. You know, they had Alfa employees parked in there and the rest were residents or cabin owners and such that are parked in there right now. But that's a, that's kind of my summary. Do you have any questions for me?
I may have missed you making this statement, Mike, but if, if you had to keep your equipment 100 feet from the stream on those private lots, what would that, what would the effect be?
I don't know off the top of my head. I do know we have, we have streams that cross. For example, I do know we have a covert on the rabbit, lower rabbit run, which we want to cover with snow that comes, runs right past the, kind of goes to the subdivision and then through the campground right there into campsite number nine. That would be our preferred route for taking up the snowmaking and probably have a, want to have a tower in there somewhere. I'm not sure, you know, where, you know, how much wetland and other things there might be in there at this point in time. So I, I, because I don't have a detailed plan, I can't answer that question. Okay. We would, we would just want to be able to have some way to, to work through those issues if we got there.
Yeah, and it's not like today you can go take a look.
I can't take a look. And I, I need to, and we have some of the hurdles we need to cross first is, right now, we don't have sufficient water to make snow in Supreme. And I need to cross that hurdle with Salt Lake City Water first. Okay. You know, until I have water, then we can't take the next stop, step either. So.
Okay.
Other questions?
All right, I'm not hearing them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Next on the agenda is the Unified Fire Authority, Jay Torgerson, who I know has, I don't think you've briefed the town council on some of the changes in operations at Station 113. At least in, to my recollection.
I lost you for just a minute, mayor. When I got switched over, I didn't hear what you asked.
Oh, I was just calling on you and saying that you, I think you have some interesting information about operation changes at Station.
Yeah. Yeah. Good afternoon, everybody. So just, just a brief update on a few other things related to COVID. We have had 476 of our employees that have been vaccinated so far. That's almost 92% of our employees. So very few are declining the vaccination. And we're not making it mandatory, but we're pleased that everybody is choosing to be vaccinated. So I, I really feel like we are turning the corner with what we're seeing with the patients that we're transporting and, and the status of the hospital partners that we have. And I'm knocking on wood that six months from now, all of us are in a better place. I'm really hopeful that that will be the case. We have a recruit camp that just started at the beginning of the month with 36 new recruits that are in training. That training lasts for about four months. So we'll have hopefully 36 new firefighters here at the end of that. And not everybody makes it through the training. But we're hopeful that, that most everybody does make it through. So that's a, a good time to, to replenish our retirees and those that have moved on to other things. So the first part of June, we'll have 36 new firefighters out in our, in the field. As far as call volume for the town of Alta, so this is just from January 1st. So it's what we have thus far in the first quarter, a total of 21 calls, 15 of them were medical calls. Three of them were fire calls and three of them were good intent calls. I heard Pat Shea on earlier, he commented about wildland fire. And, you know, we, I've talked with, with our information outreach team as well as our wildland fire division. And if things are, are in a place where we can gather as a group this spring or whenever we can do that, you know, we would love to, to do maybe a wildland fire information barbecue or breakfast. We talked, we talked prior to COVID about doing a pancake breakfast for the town of Alta, just down at the fire station or somewhere up in the town and inviting citizens to come and talk with the 113 folks. We could coordinate that with, with someone from our wildland fire division and probably someone from the state or the forest as well to get any information out to town residents and business owners. I think that's a great idea. We can certainly facilitate that.
It's a little, it's a little ironic to have a barbecue for a wildland fire session.
Do it safely. Do it in the middle, do it in the middle of the Wildcat lot. Plenty of room. The mayor mentioned that, and I think I mentioned last meeting, that we, we really want to improve our coverage within the canyon, especially as we are seeing an increase in the number of people in the canyon and the congestion and the difficulty of, of getting around in the canyon. So what we are asking the, the 113 crew to do is if they are, if they are doing any, any duties within the canyon, going on business inspections, those sorts of things, for them to take the fire engine rather than the ambulance. What that allows them to do is they can respond to any type of call. They'll have all their medical gear on the fire engine as well as being able to respond to a fire call. So for, for any medical call that occurs within the canyon, we are going to also dispatch an ambulance to respond from the valley. So that when the crew from 113 arrives on scene, they can determine if, if that person is in a condition that they can wait for an ambulance to arrive from the valley and then be transported down by that ambulance. That way it enables that crew to stay up in the canyon and be available to respond to other medical calls or fire calls or any other type of call that may come in. If the crew is, is in the station, they have the ability to respond in either the fire engine or the ambulance, depending on what the call is. They, they have the ability to use either one of those. So more than likely, if they are in the station and it's a medical call, they'll take the ambulance. And then when they arrive on scene, if, if the person who they've been called for needs to be transported rapidly, then they will, they will load the person in the ambulance and they will do a rapid transport. And then the ambulance that's been dispatched to respond from the valley will continue up, up into the canyon and they will remain in the canyon while 113 does that transport so that there is coverage while they are gone. So it, it covers that gap that we have had in the past of, of the ambulance being gone and the crew being gone during that transport. Battalion chiefs are also going to, to cover the station while they're down doing training. We're not going to schedule them to do training during, during the busy times of the year and especially on weekends. But that training will be scheduled during times when it's not as busy and when they are brought down to the valley to do any type of training, then they'll make the best effort to, to have coverage while they're gone to maintain that continuous coverage. I know that our logistics division is, is talking with Alta Ski List to make arrangements to be able to use the, the fuel pumps behind the cat shop up at Alta so that that's another area where we can save driving down to 6000 South where the UDOT fuel pumps are where we normally would fuel. That would allow them to stay in the canyon if they're able to use, use that fuel and have some, some sort of agreement in place where they're able to bill UFA for any kind of fuel that they, they use so they can stay up in the canyon for that. That, any questions as far as that, that response guideline for me on how that would work or why we think that's important?
Council members, any questions for Jay?
I, I did have a question, Jay, and that related to the barbecue or the pancake breakfast. My understanding in the past is the community supports that or contributes towards it. Is this a fund that we could set up or can you tell us how we can best participate and be partners with you in that?
Yeah, so that the, what we've been able to do to provide those in our communities is we've had donations from private businesses that have supported it, but it's not coming out of taxpayer dollars. So Matt McFarlane, an old time Alta employee and long-term patroler, he has overseen that program and, and could work with, with us in the town to, to get that up and running.
Though we talked to Daryl.
You know, Daryl. Yes. There was just one more thing that we are excited to help with, and that is we, we have a peer support program within our agency. And we, we feel like it's very important to, to attend to the needs of our employees with peer support in many different areas, mental health. And we are partnering with Alta Ski List there. They have a group that is sending some people down to get some training to develop their peer support program. I think it's an area that, you know, we often neglect. And so we had Matt Leary and James Dillon that attended a peer support training today. And Matt said that they have a few other Alta patrollers that are coming down to get some training from. We have a, a social worker that is a, a fire department employee that oversees our, our health and wellness program. And so we're trying to, to reach out to other agencies that we often work with. So law enforcement agencies, ski patrol agencies, healthcare workers, those places that, that could use help in this peer support training. And so it was nice to have the two Alta patrollers here today that are going through that training and certainly be a resource for your town employees as well as, as the private businesses up there. It's a small community and, and you all know that, you know, you, some of your employees are affected by some of the things that they deal with that work. I think it'll be a great resource. Any questions for me? Any questions for me?
I'm not seeing any more, Jay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, y'all. Have a great week. Be safe.
All right. The next item is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the January fifth, twenty twenty-one work session and the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes. The treasurer's report and the staff report.
I move that the council approve the items in the consent agenda.
I'll second that. And is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Okay, those have been approved unanimously. Any questions from the council members regarding the departmental reports? I have one myself for Mike Maury, and that is as, as Mike Mon reported, we had a problem on Friday. And I want to thank Mike. I did thank, I said this in the road meeting that we had just yesterday. But I want to say it in the town council meeting too. I want to thank Mike Mon and Dave Fields too for honoring and, and understanding that we had reached earlier in the year about what to do if the canyon looked like it was going to close. And as it happened, I was with Mike Maury at the time that we got the message that this was the plan. And Mike Maury turned to me and he said, that's a promise kept. And I, and I really appreciate the the commitment to, to doing the, what we can to, and the idea behind it was the big fail for our community would be to have a bunch of people stuck overnight with no place to shelter safely. Either from the weather, for that matter, or but from COVID as well. And the idea was to try and get people to head out of town earlier so that that wouldn't be the case when the road closed. But as Mike said, what happened was too many people tried to all leave at the same time. And so that happened out of Snowbird. They got out. Our folks couldn't even get out of the parking lots. So they ended up sitting in their cars from when they got in them at two o'clock, having been told that the canyon was going to close soon and or close this afternoon and the ski area was going to close early until, I don't know, seven thirty or some very uncomfortable late hour. And I'm just wondering, Mike, I, I don't know what Mike Mon's approach the day after tomorrow is, is planned to be. I haven't been part of an update on that. I'm wondering if you have or whether you have or you haven't, I'm wondering if you have a comment about what happened and how to proceed.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to talk. When we started thinking about all of these scenarios and making plans, I think everybody acknowledged at the same time that every one of these plans is, is going to change. We're going to do a lot of learning. And I think last weekend was a good example of that. Sometimes, you know, things that look good on paper, you know, don't shake out well in reality. The good part of that is it highlighted things that we think we can do better with and that we know that are in our control. And much of what happens is beyond our control, you know, when it comes to human behavior. I, I think that one of the things that we discussed in the road meeting that you'll see come into play this weekend is a more active messaging role for people who might be on the mountain skiing. And that's probably going to begin earlier so that we don't create a sudden exodus to move to the highway. I think we're going to start promoting the idea, if, if the conditions develop, that, you know, the road has a probability of closing today, start making your plans now earlier in the day and see if we can't get more of a phased reaction by the public. We're working right now to try and secure some off-duty officers for Friday morning to show up early and be more aggressive in the traction law enforcement, which comes into play every time we have a, a bad road scenario. We, we've learned time and time again, if we have a dry highway, we, we can get people out of town from Snowbird and Alta when they're both very busy pretty efficiently. But when we get into poor road conditions, you know, there's become so many variables and we think we can hopefully gain some ground by being more proactive in the enforcement, which, you know, everybody always asks, if you follow social media, you know, how, how come nobody was out there checking snow tires this morning? And even though it's an unpopular answer, it's because when that need exists, so do many others. We're, we're commonly holding calls as is UPD in those conditions. And, you know, there's just not manpower available to, to do that important function, which is why we're looking at securing some off-duty people and finding ways to pay them.
Yeah, we talked about that yesterday at the road meeting, as, as you said, and I, I think another shout out with thanks to the, to the ski area managers, you know, Mike and Dave for, you know, being in on that plan with additional help. We, we talked about it as kind of a, we have, we have an agreement in, in place about metering, that is, you know, getting people out. But this is another use of some of those resources. So that's great.
My only other comment would be also related to Mike Mon's report, you know, about when the superior Hellgate section of the highway is closed and we have a busy snowy day, you know, there's just a, a number of bad scenarios developed for everybody in Alta. And as he pointed out, when our only way out of town is the bypass road and it's heavily parked. Excuse me, Alta traffic is literally at the mercy of every roadside vehicle trying to get into the travel lane. One of the concepts that we talked about yesterday was maybe exploring ways to find some physical barriers to control the entry and exit points in that area so that it happens at a better rate. And I know that UDOT and Snowbird are already talking about ideas for that. And, you know, if they can find a way to do that, that doesn't take away too much parking, I think that they're open to it.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, I, I will point out that I learned yesterday, I didn't, I hadn't been aware of this, but that the UTA put additional people on the buses on Friday to get more people out, which was part of the plan with them too. And they asked people to refrain from speaking, which was part of the plan. They put forty people instead of twenty people on a bus. And if they're not talking that, I, I didn't do the analysis, given the conditions that occurred, it might be worth looking at, but that's what they did. And the idea is that that would be perfectly safe or as safe as riding up with twenty people on the bus without a conversation was refraining from conversing. But the downhill travel time, they're on the bus for a long time, unfortunately. So that didn't, that I don't know how well that worked, but they also were trying really hard to make sure they could get people, their customers back down into their, into the valley. Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is my report. But at least it's not as dark as it was in the December meeting at this time. Okay. So about COVID, we continue to operate our office with one staff member at a time and no walk-in visitors. I, I continue to attend the Salt Lake County Mayor's COVID and other emergency briefings on Fridays. The case rates in Salt Lake County have gone down like they have in many parts of the country. And the last fourteen days, it's still considered quite high, but it's at five hundred and twelve. So it's about half of what it was a month ago. So like I said a little bit earlier, I have repeatedly asked if people in Congress living in frontline hospitality workers can receive vaccinations. I'll just say that the, the places where I've asked that are in, are to the Salt Lake County Director of Public of the Department of Health. He doesn't have the authority to authorize it, but he does talk to the state. I've brought it up several times in the Tourism Economic Recovery Committee that I'm a member of, which is, does report to the Governor's Command, and they have conveyed this request. And I've also asked the dean of the business school, who is the Economic Recovery. I can't remember the full title, but he's the, he's, he's the member of the Governor's Command Team for Economic Recovery. And so he speaks to the governor regularly as well. So I've made the ask that way. I also, on Sheridan's prompt actually, and I, it's not my place to ask, and it's not my place to report what, even if I knew, but I don't know whether or not anything has come of it. But I wrote to the Chair of the Board of Education for the Canyon School District and asked that our school teacher be vaccinated specifically. So that also request was made. The response has generally been that all of their allocations now have been age, are now age-based. And so if you are a hospitality worker who's seventy, you can put yourself, you know, get a reservation to be vaccinated if there's vaccine available, which all of this is pending sufficient vaccine. The governor's lowered the age to be eligible to sixty-five, by the way, starting in March. Unfortunately, as many of the people who are hearing me, I'm probably the members of this meeting. South Africa reported last week the AstraZeneca vaccine is not effective against their new variant that emerged in their country, which is of course quite concerning that any variant would be resistant to, or not, not that any of the vaccines wouldn't be effective against any of, any variant is alarming or concerning in any case. So we'll see. I've had a couple of comments with the, back and forth with the tourism recovery folks because they are very much interested in getting back to business and I understand that. And, you know, my parents were restaurant owners in a ski resort when I was in high school and I am sympathetic to the, to the problem. And they were talking about suggesting to the Governor's Command that as more people get vaccinated, they could move tables closer together instead of six feet, have them three feet. And in the face of new variants that are a hundred and fifty percent as contagious, I suggested that that was a bad idea. Okay, you have the details for this. There's a, I was going to say something about the UFA and their operations at one thirteen, but Jay has provided that to the budget season is starting up. We'll, we will soon know more about how we stand. We still don't have results. Good, solid results from the, the Christmas season, which I think it would be very good to have before we go into the budget season. On the nineteenth, I attended the UFA, UFSA board meeting, mostly technical changes to board policies, such as allowing the finance committee to approve rather than just recommend approval for budget amendments. With our move into the UFSA, I no longer got an automatic seat at the finance committee. Each of the members would have one, and as a direct member, we had one. So I, I no longer had that automatic seat, but I volunteered to be named to the UFSA Finance Committee and that was, and was appointed to it. And as such, was appointed to the UFA Finance Committee. So I'm still on it. We did a review of the 2020s goals and accomplishments for the UFA and for the UFSA. Piper and Jen will appreciate this, that we agreed to move the accounting from QuickBooks to Casell. And then the other really interesting thing in that role was I was thou, now on the side of an agency that is taxing, is a taxing authority to approve an RDA or CRA for the city of Midvale. And so that was really interesting to be on the other side of one of these presentations and asks. So the idea was to give them tax increment funding for the development of their downtown. And the expected net benefit, depending, there were two paths that they could go down, a smaller one or a bigger one. And the benefit to the UFSA is either one point three million or two point three million more money than they otherwise would have over the lifetime of this project, which I forgot to write down how long. It was either fifteen or twenty years. On the twenty-first, I attended the Cog meeting, which the focus was on legislative updates. We have Shelley Tusher from Parsons Bailey as our frontline lobbyist. And I find her to be quite communicative and informative, very helpful. I communicate with Cameron Deal to Utah League of Cities and Towns as well. She reports to us and to me and the staff about, well, are these bills of concern? And we sometimes say, yeah, sometimes say no. I'll give you two examples of ones that have mattered to, that I wanted her to know what we thought about them. And that was the auxiliary dwelling units in the valley because of the housing crunch in Salt Lake Valley that state is reaching into municipal code about that. And in Alta, not that, not that Peruvian estates would end up with a auxiliary dwelling unit instead of extra parking or anything like that. But if we, we don't want the state to undermine our requirements for things like inner lodge, you know, management at each housing unit, for example. Another one of these was that they're taking away some control of firearms and, and their use. And I, I talking to Mike Maury about this, we didn't really care that the state would take away our ability to restrict the ownership of firearms, which we don't have in mind to do anyway. But the discharge of firearms is actually a real issue in the town of Alta, and we didn't want them to take that out of our control. On January twenty-first, at the CWC meeting, we, as a part of the mountain transportation study, and if you haven't been paying attention to this town council members and constituents of Alta, this is a pretty interesting process. As part of the CWC's mountain transportation system study, we've been seeing reports from vendors and operators of various modes of transportation. This is going in parallel to the UDOT EIS, but where the UDOT EIS is focused on Wasatch Boulevard and the town of Alta, the CWC is really the whole central Wasatch as a, as a bigger unit. And so the first of the reports of the operators of various modes that we heard from was about buses from the UTA. Just to summarize, the main downsides of buses is that they're subject to weather and depending on the lineage to traffic. And that very many buses would be needed. You'd have a stream of buses to carry a significant number of people that was, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's like a bus every two minutes or three minutes or something like that. It's really a lot of buses. The upsides, though, are that they are very flexible. They, you can get more buses. If more buses are needed, you can take buses away if buses are not needed. You build a train system in Little Cottonwood Canyon and global warming really affects our ski areas. You know, the lifetime of a train system was what they said was fifty to a hundred years. And I think that. You know, a hundred years ago, we had rail line in Little Cottonwood Canyon and it's not very useful anymore. And the other upside is that there's a high connectivity to the existing transportation systems in the valley, which could serve. Of Ferris customers and something that I am confident, at least Margaret and probably all of us. Will find interesting is that the C W C reviewed and issued an R F P for a visitor use study. And that is being responded to now. On the twenty second, the Budget Committee for the C W C met. The good news is Sandy decided to pay its dues. So that was good news. There is a continuing question of how to assess membership fees. I think we get plenty of value for our contribution. And it puts us in a really nice place to say that we give a lot per capita. So nobody's going to ask us for a lot more. On the twenty seventh, the last time that I met with the Tourism Task Force, they are meeting every other Wednesday. Right now, so I couldn't attend today's. Talked about the workforce needs and to determine, so for example, a lot of businesses that are in tourism. Use various kinds of visas to attract seasonal workers from overseas. So that got talked about. We talked, we, as I mentioned already, we work with Unified Command to understand vaccine strategy. In regard to the tourism industry and. That was a big topic of conversation. On February first, the C W C Board Meeting met and we heard from Dave Whitaker about the National Forest Operations in our National Forest. The Salt Lake Ranger District. Has the visitation of Yellowstone National Park. It has eight Rangers and one law enforcement officer. That was pretty interesting. The second half of that meeting was the cog railway presentation by Statler Rail. The pros to that are that it's relatively resistant to avalanche risk because you can put the tracks in places that the avalanche risk is low. And it's got high capacity. Now, whether you think that's an advantage or not, depends on what you're trying to accomplish, of course. But that's part of what it can do. The cons are that it's not flexible, as I mentioned. And when I asked about the alignment into Alta, I was pretty surprised. The drawing that they gave us that they illustrated was a station near the cliff to the south of the cliff. Southwest of the cliff, up the bypass road on the north edge of the bypass road. I don't know how it's supposed to cross the road, but it has to cross the road to get into Alta and. Mister Corrith would not be pleased, I think, with the alignment of where it would go. Just to take one example, because they were talking about getting it across the bypass road, building a bridge. And somehow getting it through those houses and past the Peruvian either into the Wildcat Lot. Or into, say, the between the rustler and the Alta Lodge. That seemed pretty problematic to me. So when I pointed that out, they said, at least the, at least there wouldn't be as many buses or as much traffic. I was like, well, that's not where the traffic goes. At the road meeting yesterday, as you heard from Mike and largely discussed moving people out of the area when snow comes. Coming up meetings that you may want to attend that are public is the C W C Mountain Transportation. Gondola Meeting is tomorrow at ten A M, February eleventh, February twelfth is the C W C Legislative Committee Meeting. At eleven thirty, U F A, U F S A starts at seven thirty on the sixteenth. I was just asked today, as you remember, we signed up for Community Renewable Energy Program. And they're just asked me to attend a meeting on the seventeenth. I didn't even have a chance to look at my calendar. Either I or town council members who they're looking for. So if there's a town council member. Well, I'll look at my calendar and if I can't make it, we'll solicit the town council member. The C W C Budget Finance Committee is on the nineteenth at eleven. Council of Mayors is eleven thirty on February twenty fifth. The C W C Board Meeting, the full board meeting is on March first at three thirty P M, the March and on March ninth, where we have another road meeting at ten. I'm going to now report on the temporary dog licenses issued between the eighth of January and the ninth of February. Stephanie Chaffee, three days, starting on the one thirteen, Brooke McLean, fourteen days, starting on the fourteenth. Evan Unger, fourteen days, starting on the fifteenth. Mariana Ableson, three days on the sixteenth. Kevin McDonald's, two days on the seventeenth. Larry Williams, thirty days on the eighteenth. Kathy Moore, twenty nine days on the twentieth. Paige, Jan is a Kehoe. I'm sorry, sorry, I don't know.
I don't know how either, but that sounds good to me.
Okay, thirteen days on the twenty third. Katie Shigiyoka, thirty days on the twenty ninth, Paxton Mater, thirty days on February first. Kevin Dennis, fourteen days on the third, and Evan Unger, six days on the third. That is my mirrors report.
Harris, I had a question. You said that we should know soon about our solid numbers for the budget. Do you have an idea when that is?
Yeah, my understanding is the twentieth of February, we'll get the December numbers. And the January numbers come in a month later. So by late March, we would have. You know, the first half of the ski season, more or less.
And we don't actually see those. That deposit in our account to the twenty second or twenty third. That's kind of how we get notified of the dispersment.
Oh, so it's a little later in the month than I said, okay.
Well, they say it goes in on the twentieth, but they don't tell you until the twenty third.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion and possible action on a business license study. And Professor Richard Haskell is with us and submitted something to us. So, you know, a business license study is designed to allow us to decide whether or not the business license. Fees are proportional to the burden that a business is putting on the town. And there are restrictions on how on what we can do. We can't soak them. We can recover our costs. So. I'm not exactly sure how we want to proceed. Margaret's been organizing the connection with Professor Haskell. So maybe I'll start by offering the floor to Margaret. And then you can hand it over to. Our guest when you think that when you're ready to maybe introduce the situation.
Sure, I I think because we've talked about this in the last several months, I don't think I have to go into a lot of detail on it. But I did want to make up. An introductory comment in the sense that. Unfortunately, it seems like it has become a personal issue and it's not about Harris. It's not about me. It's about the Alta community and what we do and how we proceed. To the the benefit of the entire community. So I I wanted to just say that initially. And then open it up to Rick and I believe he has. Some comments about the document that he sent us before and potentially amendments or or corrections. To that. So I'll turn it over to you now, Rick.
Thank you, Margaret, and thank you, Mister Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you and the the town council members about this. You know, we had a discussion here a month or more ago during a work, a work session. And I took the feedback from that discussion and made various amendments to the proposal. I think that what has been sought here by those that have asked me to take a look at this with you. Is probably a little bit broader than just a business license and fee study at this point, although admittedly, I think that's where we may have started. In our earliest conversations and really a discussion or a review and study of revenues and costs. And allocations that the the town and town property owners and town residences are facing. As as you look at some some challenges that many communities have in trying to align revenues. With with costs as things tend to change around us more than we would like from time to time. The I I took that feedback, as I said, I made I made some changes. Those changes are reflected in the document that I believe Margaret distributed through you. Here a week or more ago. There were a couple of comments I received in the aftermath of that, some feedback I got. That I thought were particularly poignant and that caused me to make a couple of small edits to this as well. So. The the item that you have before you or that you've got a copy of, I would say that there are three very small changes to that. That I'd like to introduce. The first is that in the opening paragraph, the preamble to this, if you will. I offer what's probably perceived as a normative statement about the challenges in terms of increasing costs. And I did so reflective of some of the input that I've received from those I've been speaking with. It was pointed out that that was normative, kind of draws a conclusion, and the person who pointed out was absolutely correct. So I've I've changed that and let me read that paragraph to you very briefly. That paragraph that you first paragraph you would have seen is stricken from the version of the proposal I'm looking at. And it is replaced with the following. In recent years, the town of Alta, like many small towns across the. Across the nation. In fact, excuse me, I am pulling off of the wrong item for a moment. Let me go to the item that I sent to Margaret. I am terribly sorry. I was about to read you the wrong paragraph and that won't serve us well. So in me in recent years, many small towns across the nation have experienced challenges resulting from revenue and cost changes. Associated with supporting and an appealing quality of life for their residents, the beauty of their natural endowments. Attractiveness to those guests who use town residential, commercial and recreational resources. And the many externalities associated with their unique and precious attributes. Based on input provided from various town residents and town council members, it would appear the town of Alta may be amongst this group of towns and cities. So I've tried to help reinforce the objectivity with which I would approach this study. And those working with me would approach the study. Because it's not clear, having not reviewed any of the details of the budgets, materials, revenue sources, et cetera, that I go on to propose. We do a review of that the town is facing a cost increases or that there isn't necessarily an allocation problem. There are those amongst your community that may be concerned about this, and I believe that the proposal in the study simply served to identify. Whether or not there are revenue opportunities to take advantage of, costs that might be adjusted. Or allocated amongst different parties for for contribution to those costs and such. And 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 that is the proposal that you have before you. So that that is the substantive change and is in the first paragraph. The two other changes I make reference it very towards the back of this of a June ninth council meeting. And that is an error on my part. I took the second Wednesday of June, but I now realize that is a June sixteenth council meeting. And then I also realized that I've left off an element that might have some relevance and that is to take a look or or consider in this. Some of the gratis services that are provided by some of the local businesses, such as snow removal at the ski resorts and that kind of thing. Otherwise, the proposal is exactly as as you have seen it. You've you've given some input to it. It is opening up a a broad vision. For what might possibly over time be a two-phase study, but details on phase one. Where we review the the revenue. Items that the town has available to it, or we review some of the costs and allocations. And try to find equity if it needs to be found or identify that equity has already been found. And there's much more detail to this, of course, but that's about as simple as it can be laid out. I've given in the proposal a timeframe. I've given in the proposal a cost structure. And that cost structure for the for the study in its entirety for phase one of nine thousand dollars. And so with that, you've been through the proposal and perhaps you have questions for me or perhaps you simply have discussion you'd like to have amongst yourselves. And I'll open it up to that.
Let me invite the council members or the town staff.
I just was going to add, if I could, that. There is a need, of course, when we have a study or something that's in excess of two thousand dollars. That there be oral bids. And so I did obtain a bid from both Zion's. Public Finance, who had done the original business license study and was speaking with Suzie Becker. Who has taken over from Jeanette Harris, who did the original study in twenty thirteen. And she was concerned about the costs and the calls and so on for U F A and was trying to. Find out about that for me and I believe as part of that, Harris, she communicated with. Tony Hill, the CFO of U F A that then went to Jay and so on and so forth. And so that. I don't have a clear answer from her at this point, but the last information I got from her was six thousand five hundred dollars. For her to do the business license study for Zion's Bank. I also communicated with Laura Lewis and Fred Philpot. At Lewis Young Robertson in Burlingame. And their oral bid was for six thousand dollars for a business license study.
Yeah, so let me let me address that. I got a call. The the U F A was a little bit concerned. They thought that the way it was communicated to them was we were studying leaving the U F S A, becoming a direct member. And since they hadn't heard anything about that from me, I got a call. And when I spoke with her, I she told me and we now I received yesterday, maybe. A written proposal for a business license study for five thousand dollars. She pointed out that because the fire service. Costs are no longer paid from our budget. It isn't an appropriate item for the usual business license. Fee study that they do any longer. However, so there's a little bit of a catch twenty-two there. I appreciate the irony. But. In her written, that's what she told me on the phone, five thousand, and that would be it that. But then in her written proposal. She offered five thousand for a business license study and a thousand dollar additional for a. Understanding of the fire costs. So that would come to six thousand dollars. We do have to have three potential vendors for a service of this magnitude. Though what she is offering is, I'm not sure the same service. That we're talking about with, you know, Professor Haskell, because as he pointed out. It's what he's proposing is not exactly a business license study. I do think that a business license study was where we were headed. If what we're going to do is a broader revenue. Alternatives and expenditure alternative study, that I think is a little bit of a different. R F P, so to speak. In December, I think it was. In a conversation with Mayor Jenny Wilson of Salt Lake County. in a conversation with Mayor Jenny Wilson of Salt Lake County, maybe it was a little earlier, I was concerned about the potential insolvency of the town of Alta, given that our expenditures, we've managed our expenditures to be pretty flat over the last few years and still manage to provide, I think, quite good service. As a matter of fact, part of what I want to do is call out the staff for their new, I I think heroic efforts during this pandemic year. And I said to Jenny, to Mayor Wilson, that I was concerned about what was going to happen. And we were brainstorming ways to keep the town afloat, if necessary, till the next ski season began, because, you know, we have very few revenues after April ever. And she offered me the services of the finance. What what's his title, John? Director of Finance for the county? I don't remember.
Finance Director. He might even be in one of the assistant mayors, but.
Yeah, right. That might. Yeah, he might be Darren Casper. And I reached out to him after seeing the scope of Professor Haskell's proposal, because Mayor Wilson indicated that the county could just provide the service to us. We didn't talk about pricing. And at the time I wrote to him, which was somewhere a week or ten days ago, something like that, he wrote back and he said, we just don't have the capability. My people are working overtime. But just this afternoon, I received a referral to a potential supplier. He was the Assistant Budget Director for the county apparently, or the Budget Director. I I haven't had a chance to read it because I've been in this meeting. But that might be a second potential bid on a broader study. So I I'm not exactly sure what it is that we're really talking about right now, but it doesn't seem like I I think we've got a couple of different issues before us.
When I had communicated with both Susie and Fred, both agreed that to the extent if the town were to decide to go back to a contract city with UFA, then obviously the business license component of disproportionate service would come into play. Susie also shared with me that Riverton and Harriman, and specifically Riverton, had chosen to develop their own service area to be a tax authority themselves with UFSA. And that way limit the cost of the fire to their stations within their municipality, rather than paying for all of the costs within the entire UFA itself. So.
Well, they left UFSA, actually. They're in the or they're so Riverton and Harriman left UFSA entirely.
Right. And Riverton, what they did is they still are a tax authority, but they have their own service district, as she explained it to me, that they develop.
They have their own fire department. They're they have their own fire engines, fire stations inside their community.
What Susie explained to me was that Riverton specifically is part of UFSA still, but that they are their own taxing authorities. So that's that's what I had understood from her.
That's that's not accurate. They they left UFSA. They are still part of the UFA. And but the difference is, and and part of what was has been confusing about our fire services cost, and I cannot actually believe that I'm talking about this again, yet again. But and I really think this this is like magical thinking that leaving the UFSA will save us money. But I will say this, Riverton has fire stations that they have within their town. We do not. And so when we receive a call from the fire station that is in the unincorporated county, it is crossing a service air a member boundary when we were a direct contracting member. That is why usage made any difference of any kind. The usage is calculated by the number of calls when it goes across a member boundary. Riverton's UFA station will generally not be going across a member boundary. It'll be stated there. They are going to be served by their own station, which we don't have. So we're always going to be subject to usage if we're a direct contracting member. The reason why a call is considered a call for the purposes of figuring out what percentage of the station each member uses is because they don't get fine-grained enough to think about the cost of a call. That's number one. And the second reason is because the cost of an expensive call would bankrupt the town. So they don't do it that way. We had a fire a couple of years ago that was extraordinarily expensive. And if that were actually accounted to our account, we had eight fire engines and an all-night effort to to fight that fire, destroyed three residences. That that totally swamps all kinds of other calls. So that's one thing. The other thing is the station in Snowbird costs two point two million dollars. What are we? We use a portion of that. If we're a direct member, we would be using, well, the projection this year was seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth, one-third of the two point two million dollars, because we use about thirty-one percent of the calls. As a contracting member, I mean, as a UFSA member, we're at five hundred and, correct me, John, five thirty-three, I think, is the total bill, or five fifty-three. I I may be misremembering about.
Or like five thirty, five thirty-something.
Yeah, it's about about two hundred thousand dollars less. And in some of the letters that I've been receiving, there's confusion about two hundred thousand dollars. I saved the town two hundred thousand dollars this year on a one-time basis by making sure we stayed in the UFA as a at a direct member cost for the second half of twenty twenty. That's a one-time two hundred thousand dollar savings over what we would have been paying as UFSA members immediately. There's an ongoing two hundred thousand dollar subsidy that the UFSA is providing to us for our share of the usage of that station. And what are we paying? Seven hundred thousand, or actually, we're not. We're paying five hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our tax rolls. What are we getting for that? What we're getting for that is a twenty-four, seven manned staff professional fire service. The calls to the ski area for medical transport are irrelevant. The two point two million dollars is the cost of having firefighters at that station. If we weren't paying our share or the UFS, if that wasn't being paid for, if that two point two million dollars were to go away, and some of that is is coming from the recreation area contribution that the unincorporated county is getting to account to their account. If that were to go away, and Brighton is facing this, because they're in the UFSA, but they're also still in the recreation area, so they are getting subsidized, just like we are, but to a bigger number. But that station is actually in their town, so it's a different story than having the station not in their town. And also, they're in the UFSA. But if we didn't, if that two point two million dollars wasn't isn't available, that station would go away. And we would be served by the station on Wasatch Boulevard in Cotwood Heights. We would experience delays to getting service, and we would be seeing higher insurance rates. Could be that the higher insurance rates would be enough to offset the the amount of taxes that our community will be paying. The difference between the hundred and fifty, three thousand dollars we paid in nineteen twenty and the five hundred and thirty or five hundred and fifty thousand dollars we'll be paying in the next calendar year. There is no magic bullet. We had a good deal. Our costs did not go up. Our subsidy went away. We had been getting a gift, and the people who decided who were giving us that gift decided to stop giving us that gift. And the people who were giving us that gift were the taxpayers of Salt Lake County. And I think that for people in Alta with one point one million dollar properties on average to be getting subsidized by people from Midvale, I I, as a matter of and here I align language with with Sheridan, as a matter of social justice, I don't find that to be very defensible. So I I just think the UFA discussed this decision and has been made and ought to be off the table. And it's like, you know, I know there are people who think that what would it take? What it would take is to become a a a contracting member and for somebody to make up the difference between whatever we think we want to pay and the seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars the UFA accounts to us. You can go to the UFA board and say, do your accounting differently. You're not going to win that argument. You can go to the county council and say, put us back in the recreation area. Maybe the new county council will do that. But whether they'll do that and subsidize us to get out of the UFSA and not pay the same taxes as Brighton or the people in Snowbird, we have a more conservative, more county council than we used to, and they and the people, the three new members ran explicitly on a fiscal responsibility argument. The reason why your taxes are going to go up is because Salt Lake County imposed about an eight percent increase in their property tax. And I was criticized for saying that first in a memo I wrote. It's the lower number. The second is your property taxes are going to go up because the UFSA is going to charge us the same rate as everybody else. If you don't like the value of your house, you can take that up with the county assessor. That is not a matter of of town government. So I think we should I think we should agree to take the UFA question out of this discussion and then consider what we want to do about a business license study. And if what and I think that's a good idea myself, and because our police is on our budget, and it would be worthwhile finding out if there are disproportionate costs for policing. That's one of the big, that's really the biggest item. And so I I support doing that. I support doing that a little bit later than right now, because I want to see how we're doing this winter on our revenues before we start spending discretionary money. And so I would propose that we do a business license study. We collect three bids for a business license study, and we decide to do that in April, say. And it won't be in time for the budget that we have to pass in June, but the budget can be amended and and the business license fees don't go into effect until October, so we have time to to manage that. I also think we ought to have a conversation if we want expert advice from potential vendors of the service for a broader revenue and expenditure study, but I think that those are separate questions at this point.
May I ask a question of Piper?
Yes, please.
Oh, Piper, were the many letters that were sent in by voters and constituents in Alta included in this meeting?
No, I did not get any letters from anybody.
That came to town council?
That's correct. I did not get those.
I see. I wish there was a way to lower the temperature just a bit about the question about our involvement with UFA, UFSA. There. It seems, from my perspective, that it feels extremely personal and insulting or critical when I see it as simply an attempt, when we're looking at business licenses, to gain more information, to make the best possible decision we can. I don't see why such an expensive decision for our citizens shouldn't be examined, particularly when so many citizens have expressed their interest in supporting a business study that does include looking at how we're going to fund our firefighting capability. So I'm not sure why. I I wish I could take the sting out of it for you, but nonetheless, it's something that our citizens have clearly expressed overwhelming interest in our supporting, and as soon as possible, since the date for the bill is arriving closer and closer. So I I'm in support of it. I it's not a personal attack. I wish you didn't experience it that way, but I'm not sure how to take that out of it for you, sir. In the meantime, though, I do think it needs to be looked at. If there are better solutions and other communities seem to have come up with more creative solutions, including who actually incurs, who generates the most call and who benefits from these services, that that needs to be looked at. That's a that is a justice issue, and I'm in full agreement with the constituents that have expressed their opinion to me about supporting that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but the number of calls is a separate question, and it's not relevant to the two point two million dollars that needs to be spent to 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 have a fire station in our community. I suppose what we could say is that somebody could look into whether or not it's cheaper to get rid of a fire station. We already made that decision last year, that we decided we wanted to have a fire station. I mean, I think that an insurance company that says you don't have a you don't have fire service when you could have it a mile and a half down the road. I I can't imagine an insurance company would insure you against fire. But it it's not personal. I think it's absurd, but I don't think it's personal.
Your audio is a little difficult to hear.
It was better when you leaned into your wherever your microphone was earlier in the day. It's a little bit better.
Okay. I think that what I'm hearing from the mayor is not so much personal heat, but a level of frustration that people have been arguing against the reality of of the situation that we studied for a number of months in the year of twenty twenty. Nevertheless, I think if we can get to the three or four proposals for a broader study of the sources and distribution of revenue and expenses. Awesome. Let's take a look at it. Maybe maybe we'll learn something.
I agree.
I um I have nothing wrong with doing a study. I I think we I think we should do one. Definitely a business license study, because it hasn't been done in a while. If we can find a way to define what we want broader than that, we can create some sort of RFP and have some bids done. We just need to define what that is and what we want. I do think, though, that the mayor's point of maybe waiting a little bit, I I understand the need for this, but at the same time, we are in a challenging year with COVID. And we are very tight on our budget. We haven't given our staff a raise, and I feel like we should just wait a little bit longer until we get some more numbers in for sales tax from December, at least, just to see how we were doing. I mean, maybe it's great. Maybe when we took the made the decision to think of our revenues as less than thirty percent or whatever it was that we did, maybe we'll be above that and or and we'll be getting more money in, and we can have a little more discretionary money. But I think we should just wait a little bit. I know our residents want the study done, and I I think we should have it done. I know they want, and they are concerned about UFSA. But it. Um, but at the same time, we are already in that commitment for the 2021 tax season. So I don't know if we need to have the study done right this second. It probably could wait a couple of months for that to happen because we are already in the contract or a member of UFA for 2021. So again, I don't know if we have to do it right now and it makes a little more sense to wait. I would still like to see the staff get a bit of a raise. Um, if we do have a little bit of money and also if we have some sort of RFP where we can have some competing bids, maybe we can get this cost lowered of the study and, um, you know, instead of it being 9,000, it could go down to six or a little less or whatever it is that someone can bid at. I just think it's just a little more prudent for us to do that and fiscally responsible.
I, I think, uh, Elise, that it makes sense what you said because, uh, the business license isn't coming up for some months anyway. Um, so that I don't, I don't see the urgency on the business license side. On the bigger study side, um, that's going to take a little bit longer to organize. And, you know, uh, I have tried as hard as I can to communicate to people, uh, as best I can. And it may be that I'm, uh, just didn't do a good enough job. But, um, I, I find, I, I, part of my frustration is how many comments I've received over the last week that I thought were well addressed in our discussion last year. And so that does, that does frustrate me and I, I apologize for saying it's, it's absurd. I don't think it's, that was, that was said in a moment of being a little too heated. I think that it is likely to, um, be fruitless, but anybody who wants to investigate alternatives, that is certainly their prerogative. Whether town resources are spent on it or staff resources are spent on it or my own personal time is spent on it is, if town resources are spent, partly that's a town council issue and partly it's my decision as the chief, you know, administrator of the town, chief officer of the town, whatever my title is. But, um, so I, I am not interested in having staff do research on leaving the UFA. I don't think that's a good use of their time. But, um, any, anybody who wants to investigate it can do it, but they have to not represent themselves as representing the town of Alta. And even if you say you're just a council member, that doesn't always get read that way. And what, what I was told was that Alta is considering leaving the UFA. That was the message the UFA heard. So you have to be very careful about that.
Did, did you read my address where I clearly explained to Susie Becker that I was not making a decision or representing the town? Did you see that email I sent you?
Yes, and I read it. I'm just telling you what came back. It's a game of telephone and you have to say, you know, you can't just, you, you didn't say enough to, for that message not to get misunderstood is what I'm saying.
I disagree. I saw the message and I was CC'd on it. It is absolutely appropriate for an elected official of the town of Alta to speak as an elected official of the town of Alta, Mayor Harris. It's absolutely appropriate. And part of the reason that this is such a contentious issue is that you did not get the buy-in of the entire council, as has been per usual in terms of your leadership style, sir.
We don't make decisions by unanimity, Sheridan. We vote.
Yes.
This isn't a commune. It's not a commune. It's a town council.
Board as a fait accompli and ask the council buy-in for support as opposed to including the council as your board in making a collective decision together as representative, as representative elected officials.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that history. I think.
How many examples would you like?
We made a decision collectively by a vote. That's the process by which.
It was a split vote, sir. And you brought it to the, you brought it to the council quite late in 2019. There was dissension at the time. We can go further into the history of how you resigned your position, then recommitted without telling the entire council of your plans and then got buy-ined, I believe, from many people just trying to keep you in your role, sir. The whole community was not informed about all of the details of the expenses and why you recommended what you recommended based on much of your actions behind closed doors for over a year. And now this is all coming up, sir.
I, like I said, Sheridan, I don't accept that, um, version of what happened.
Please prove otherwise, sir.
I don't have to. I'm not going to spend my time on it. Okay, so, um, what, uh, we are now 10 minutes away from the end of our meeting and then, uh, I don't know if we should move on to the next item on the agenda or not. We do have a remaining item on the, a couple of items on the agenda. We have new business in the discussion on the land use amendments. My sense about the land use amendments is that, um, we have a couple of things still to work out.
If I could interject on the, and the previous, uh, agenda item, can we give some direction to Rick to know whether he's on the hook or not? Is this something that we're going to continue to another time? Do we need to make a motion to revisit this issue? How, how do we, um, conclude this meeting on that particular topic? Um, and give Rick some guidance or some idea of what we're planning to do? Do you need a motion?
Well, the, the item on the agenda says a discussion and possible action. So the way we take action is, is a, a council member would make a motion if it's, and then it would be seconded and discussed and voted on. And, and, and the motion could range from we hire, we accept, well, I think we would be violating our purchasing, uh, rules. So I think it would not be in order, uh, to, a, a motion to hire, uh, Professor Haskell and, uh, implement this study as described. I'm not sure would be in, I don't know what the right words are. Polly, you can help me out here. I'm not sure that's in order, uh, given our purchasing rules. Um, you could make a motion that we, uh, obtain that we have an RFP for a broad, uh, uh, revenue and expenditure study and collect additional bids. You could make a motion to postpone the discussion to a future date. Uh, you could make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Um, thank you. I, I make a motion that we extend this, uh, discussion for, uh, the month of March and have it come up at that time. And in the meantime, try to identify the information for receiving adequate bids. I, I'm concerned that the cost of submitting an RFP is both extensive for staff to prepare an RFP and time consuming to then evaluate the response thereof. So I'm interested in doing an oral bid following a process where we have clearly identified what it is that we're looking to get bid upon and that that would then be considered with, um, Rick Haskell's proposal from Westminster.
I'll second.
Um, I just want to clarify, um, Margaret, what, what it is that you, by RFP, it's a request for proposals. The proposal could be an oral response. I mean, we can, we can specify that that's what we're looking for. Our purchasing requirement, our, our purchasing rules require three, uh, oral bids. I mean, I think, I think the language is, uh, by telephone. So, um, but I, but I do think we need to know what we're, I, I thought that you were, I thought you put it nicely when you said, uh, we need to know what we're asking people to bid upon.
Right. Now, I, I thought I had identified that in, when I communicated to Zion's and to Louis Young. So apparently there needs to be some further discussion about that. So whether, um, additional council member join me because we can't have multiples without violating the Open Public Meeting Act. But, um, if somehow what was identified before was inadequate, then we need to come up with what it is we need to do.
I think a business license study is a very particular thing and I, and at least with Zion's, they knew exactly what that meant. And, and, and Professor Haskell's nodding his head that it is a particular thing. And so, you know, the item on our agenda says a possible action on a business license study presentation by Professor Haskell. So, uh, there seems, if what we want is a business license study, I guess we should ask Professor Haskell if this is what this is. Is this what you would submit knowing we're looking for a business license study? And, um, if that is, then we have, then I've received two.
So, um, if I could just interject first, the agenda item that I gave to Piper was not this particular, um, language, but it was the cost allocation study that was the title of Rick's proposal. So I didn't decide that this was the title for the agenda. So that may be part of the problem that we're.
I don't recall how we got to that.
Go, go ahead, Rick.
Oh, can I also just jump in in terms of a motion to make sure instead, if there will be a motion to collect telephone bids, usually it's staff that would collect that. So I would recommend that any motion would include just delegating that to staff as opposed to having elected officials doing that job.
Yeah, um, John, uh, what, uh, in, in our conversations, we've talked about, I mean, you are aware of the conversation I had with Darren Casper and you, you, uh, that may be a, a, a fourth bid. Is that the way you were looking at that?
I think that, and we have to get three. There's nothing to stop us from getting four, five or six. But, right, and this guy was like the lead financial budget director for Salt Lake County for years and would be willing to, uh, look at our business license disproportionate, uh, cost ideas, uh, just like the others. But he's, they said that he would do it for some time to be.
So a business license study is likely to address a number of these concerns, right? Expressed in by our.
Right.
I think you have to spell out exactly and say the same thing to the, to the different vendors that you're trying to get a price and it should be written out and it should be identical for each vendor.
So is that a job that we can, uh, that, that John, that you can take up? Putting together, uh, a, a statement of what we're asking people to bid on?
Yes. If I get the same statement from the, all the people on the council, I can, I can do that.
See, that's, that's what I was trying to avoid is the staff is so busy, so overwhelmed already. As, as you said earlier, Mayor, they have really done more than 150% this year. And so I was trying to do something to relieve that burden. So.
Margaret, I don't think that, um, I mean, I'm, as the business license administrator, I think if town council wanted to send me each your own perspective on this, I could take that and smoosh it together into one statement that could be communicated from the staff. I, I don't really think it's that difficult. And I, you know, I was planning time this spring for myself anyways to dedicate towards this.
So how about, how about if we, uh, proceed this way, Jen? You would send us a, a note requesting a response to a particulars, you're going to prompt us.
Fair enough. Yep. And I'll, I'll work with the other staff to make sure that it's vetted first.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table, but I cannot remember what, uh, it entails.
Well, and, and Mr. Mayor, let me, uh, answer the question that you asked of me a few minutes ago as well, before you do that. So this proposal includes a business license study and is not limited to a business license study. The broader nature of it considers revenues, cost allocations, equitable distributions, et cetera.
Okay.
The motion on the table is to extend the discussion, this discussion to March and for, I, I understood it as to use the Haskell proposal to outline an RFP. Is that accurate, Margaret? And Sheridan?
Um, that's what I was initially thinking, but based upon the, uh, comments that Jen is saying and Polly as well, that this needs to be something that staff does. I'm, uh, I, do I amend my original motion or do I just let that motion go and say, what I'd like to do is extend this discussion to March? And at that time, uh, be in a position to review the, uh, information that Jen has, received back as a response to RFPs that come from her, uh, prompt to all of us. Is that convoluted enough?
To review Jen's compilation of your comment, council comments. Yeah.
Yes.
Is that an acceptable change to share, to you, Sheridan?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. All right. So, uh, as I understand what is before us is, 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 is a motion to, um, postpone discussion and possible action on a business license study with potentially broader cost and revenue, uh, uh, analysis to the March meeting. And in the meantime, direct staff and the person of Jen to solicit our views of what that ought to include and to provide feedback to us from that survey.
Are, are you saying the survey of just us or the survey then she takes out two vendors to respond to it?
Oh, both, I guess. Right.
Okay. All right. Yes.
I, I meant us, but you're right. I had forgotten that last step.
So you're expecting me to draft this, get it to all of you, get your responses, incorporate them and then go out and get all the bids and then report on everything by the next town council meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping that, um, some of this language would come directly from Rick based upon the proposal that he's already done so that we are comparing apples to apples and that could be sent to you. And then you send it to the council, council reviews it and sends it back to you.
Is his work proprietary towards him to a certain extent? And I don't want to be using the efforts that he's done in a way. I just want to be respectful of that.
Th- this is not an issue. You're welcome to, uh, use anything you'd like to from my proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I'll just speak up for the clerk's office that I don't think Jen should send out an RFP until the council votes on it or has input on it. I understand you're going to have input, but then you're going to want to talk about everyone else's comments, right? And then, so I, maybe in the March meeting, we'll have something that the council can vote on and say, yes, let's send out this RFP. Is that?
That seems realistic. That, that seems realistic. I think that the, uh, one, one could hope that we will all have very similar preferences and Jen will have no problem aggregating them because we're unanimous in our view. But that probably is, it's aspirational, shall I say.
Regardless of what I think about the merits of any, uh, particular approach, it seems to me that we all should be able to identify that there are two approaches. There's a narrow business, uh, fee study and there's, um, a broader study of, uh, sources and, um, and expenditures, um, along the lines of what, um, Professor Haskell has laid out. And so my, certainly my inclination is to let's identify those two, um, types of studies and let's get the RFP out there. It shouldn't be controversial and, um, my intention would not be to try to pick it apart. Um, let's, let's identify the two, uh, approaches and go from there.
I like that. And I'm still assuming if, if I can, and tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, we're going to come up with a list of things like a template for people, whoever does the calling to call just like, it's just like we're soliciting a minimum of three phone bids. We're not doing a 15-page RFP like we did for the community center, uh, because we kind of know what we want. Or are we going beyond the phone bids?
All right. I think we, we have a, we have a motion on the table. I think we've got a sense of what it would mean if we, uh, passed the motion. Although I'm sure there's a little bit of ambiguity around this one. So, uh, are we, are we ready to just make it, to take a vote on, to, to, to call the question on the motion?
Um, uh, based upon the comments of Piper and Jen, I wonder if it needs to be amended such that, well, and I don't know if it's consistent with Cliff's comment or not, that by March, we have the query or queries identified and discussed, um, and then brought back to us and then potentially thereafter, um, in April, have that followed up with the actual calling based upon that query. Is that, is that what you were saying, Cliff?
I think we can do this by consensus. I don't think we need, um, a motion. I, I think it's, uh, staff work. Um, that then can be, um, brought back to the council for action.
Okay. Did everybody hear that?
I, I, I think he was saying that it, that staff could do it and that the council might be able to come to consensus in March. It doesn't necessarily have
We, we don't, we can come to consensus now and we don't need a motion on the, to be passed, uh, to do this. Um, Polly, uh, is that, that's, uh, part, that's fine, right?
That's fine. And that seems appropriate based on this discussion.
Okay. So Margaret, I think you're being invited to withdraw your motion.
I, I so withdraw.
Okay. All right. I think this timing is realistic. And the other thing is that we'll have much better, uh, revenue data in April than we have today. About the RSC season, right? By April, we'll have, uh, at least January, some indication about February.
We'll have some indication. We won't have the final number yet. Right.
Mayor, can I ask for a clarification?
Sure.
So my observation of the council is that I've, I've seen a general, um, desire for a business license study in general. What we consider the business license study, right? I'm a little unclear how much of the council supports the add-on of the studying the other aspects of what Mr. Haskell has put in his proposal. And so I'm not sure if you guys are asking me to kind of have two options like Cliff had suggested.
Yeah, I think that that's something that you're going to be soliciting.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
Uh, sorry, I also have a question or a comment to the council people. If you get letters from your constituency that you want to have be public information, please send it to me and we can do that.
Good. All right. I'm going to propose, uh, for item number nine, a discussion impossible action on the 2021 uh, oh, for ordinance one land use amendments. Um, I'm going to move that we postpone that, uh, until the next town council meeting.
Second.
Okay. Uh, and, um, how about if I just call that question? Is there a discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you, Elise. Okay. That looked like a unanimous decision.
Mayor, um, do you want a, uh, work session before the next council meeting on that subject?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that can take us, uh, we can, and maybe, maybe we'll see how much, uh, Jen has made progress on this other question. We may have two items on a work session. So let's, okay, but that one certainly, um, new business is the next item on the agenda from, uh, 15 minutes ago.
Just suggest a little bit of a process for, um, next month, uh, disounding amendments. My, uh, my optimism knows no bounds. Uh, and, uh, maybe with council, um, we can address, um, uh, a couple of the late breaking, uh, questions and, uh, information and, um, and have, uh, a document that's ready to be, uh, moved. Um, and then, and then I suggest to my colleagues, uh, and this might apply to me as well, that if, if you have, um, uh, if you intend to, uh, make a motion to amend, um, if there is, um, um, a motion on the table that, um, and here, here maybe I need to ask for some advice from Polly McLean, but, um, I'd suggest, uh, if, um, if council members intend to, uh, make amending, uh, motions, that that language be made available in advance so that council members can have already studied it when they're going to need it.
I think that that's a reasonable request, but, um, of course, I think it's always within the purview of a town council member to make, uh, propose a, a motion, uh, that's relevant to the discussion. But yes, it certainly is, uh, leads for a, a more streamlined and a, uh, and a more efficient and a, and a more, um, considerate process to do what Cliff is suggesting. If we do the other thing, I think that, uh, this will go on even longer and, um, Polly will be able to put her kids through college on our ordinance. Although she doesn't charge us enough. It would take, and probably they'll be in college before she could accumulate enough to send them.
Or at least by the, um, but, um, if we do this right, it seems to me that, um, individual council members, uh, proposed amendments can be provided, uh, through the normal agenda process.
Yes, right. I think I understood.
Can you interpret that?
He's, I think he said it can be done through the normal agenda process. Um, and I think that the idea there is that we just put things on the agenda to be decided upon and that we are prepared, uh, ahead of time by knowing where we don't have unanimity. And those are the items that there could potentially be amendments proposed, uh, and they need to be seconded and then those, uh, get voted on and we move on to the next, uh, if there's a next controversial issue. I think that's what Cliff is talking about, just a, a kind of an orderly decision-making process like that.
Yes, exactly. If the mayor and Jungle and Polly McLean, uh, a working version of the amendments that, for example, the mayor intends to, um, move forward, then at the same time, if there's something, um, out there that I as a council member am wildly differing about, then also I can provide that, um, through, uh, the town clerk in advance to be included on the agenda materials with that agenda item.
Right. So what we'll have to do to accomplish that is, um, work over the next week or 10 days to, to know what, uh, of what version we want to send out for the consideration, uh, of, of the town council members for, um, proposed amendments so that that can get into a meeting packet ahead of time. Okay. Is there new business? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Cliff has moved. Um, I'll second any, all those in favor of adjuring, please say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Have a nice rest of the night.
You too, John. Thank you.